Good evening and welcome to the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for October 8th. Would you please join us in pledging allegiance to our country? Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call? Councilmember Irwin?
Present.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fox is absent at this point. Mayor Bill de la Pena. Thank you. There is an accident on the 101 freeway and traffic has backed up quite a bit. Are there any requests for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item? I don't think so. But before we start with the rest of the agenda, I'd like everyone to know in the audience, as well as at home watching television, that the city celebrated its 49th birthday, shall we say incorporation of cityhood, yesterday, October 7th. The city was incorporated October 7th, 1964, as a result of an election that happened in September, September 29th, 1964. And we do have some interesting statistics. In that 1964 election, 2,780 votes were cast in favor of incorporation and 1,821 votes against. The name of the city of Thousand Oaks beat out names such as Conejo by about 4,100 votes. And in that first city, in the first city election, the city had 38 candidates and eight write-in candidates for only five seats. So that's a little bit of trivia question information for you, especially for the young ones here sitting in the audience tonight. So next year, obviously, it's going to be a huge year for the city of Thousand Oaks. We'll turn 50. We'll be over the hill. All right. It's a new 40? Okay, 50 is a new 40. All right. We now move on with our special presentations. And then, please give me a minute while I move to the podium. All right. And for our first presentation, I would like to invite Matthew Mack from the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Ventura County to the podium. Welcome.
Thank you.
October 6th through 12th is Mental Illness Awareness Week. And I would like to present you with a proclamation to recognize what a difference your organization is making in Ventura County. One in every four people is affected every year by mental illness. Scientific research is producing tremendous breakthroughs in understanding mental illness that will result in more effective treatments. Every resident can make a difference in helping to improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. We ask you during Mental Illness Awareness Week that residents and businesses renew their commitment to promote public awareness toward understanding and treating mental illness. And this proclamation is presented to you. I'm just going to mention a few items here or facts here. Whereas serious mental illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, obsessive-compulsive disorder, severe anxiety disorders, borderline personality disorder, and post-traumatic stress disorders affect one in every four people every year. And whereas every citizen and community such as Thousand Oaks can make a difference in helping to improve the lives of persons affected by mental illness. So on behalf of the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Ventura County, also known as NAMI, we call upon all Ventura County residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increase and promote public awareness, understanding, treatment, and recovery of mental illness. And this proclamation is presented to you on behalf of the entire city council. Would you like to say a few words?
I would. Thank you very much. I would just like to say with regard to mental illness that it doesn't recognize Republicans or Democrats, and it doesn't recognize races or religions. And in the United States, we have about one in four people that suffers from a mental illness. And something that most of us don't think about is that we have people that will be returning from Iraq and Afghanistan, and within those people, after they get home, roughly 300,000 of them will suffer from either a depression syndrome or some type of post-traumatic stress disorder. And our job in NAMI is to increase the awareness, the education, and advocacy for people with a mental illness. And finally, according to the Surgeon General, the biggest barrier to being able to get help for people is the fact that there is such a stigma still associated with mental illness. And if we have other kinds of physical illnesses, then we're happy to discuss those with others. But if it's mental illness, then it's not something that we would like to talk about. I myself lived a normal life until I was about 45, at which time I had a depressive disorder, which kind of hampered my ability to work and to function. And I'm glad to say that after a period of time of receiving medication and dealing with psychiatric help, that for me, I was able to return back to my profession and be able to live what I think is a good lifestyle. So on behalf of NAMI Ventura, we'd just like to thank you for this recognition and say if you ever need to look us up, you can find us at nami, N-A-M-I, namiventura.org. Thank you very much.
Next, I would like to invite Steve Johnston from the County Health Department to the podium. Mr. Johnston would like to present us with an update, a very important update on emergency preparation. And this presentation will include a video, a very informative video. Good evening, Mr. Johnston.
Mayor, City Council, city staff, citizens of Thousand Oaks, thank you for allowing me this time this evening. Dr. Levin is the Public Health Officer for Ventura County. And our goal, one of our goals of the Public Health Department is to provide a safe and healthy lifestyle for everybody in our county. That means that there's 840,000 residents that we try to help and serve. Just as we do in this county, we have robust plans for wildfires, tsunamis, earthquakes. This is a brand-new plan that we rolled out last month, a preparedness plan for nuclear explosions. This hasn't really been talked about for probably half a decade. I was very small when I grew up in Wisconsin, and we were always told, "Don't eat the snow because it's radioactive," because of the testing and stuff. And, you know, so everybody was kind of afraid of radioactivity. But it hasn't really been talked much. And it is a survivable disaster. And in fact, this program is not in reaction to any intelligence. We have no knowledge that Ventura County is under imminent threat of attack. But the United States government has 15 scenarios for terrorism events in our county and unfortunately, or in our nation. Unfortunately, the number-one one is a nuclear detonation in the harbor of Los Angeles. Now, we have 840,000 people living here. Suddenly, we might have 2 million visitors coming our way. So we need some basic knowledge in how to protect ourselves to be safe and how to help others. And that's what this program's all about. We have a public service announcement video you'll see in just a minute or so. And as with other disaster preparedness plans, we have a little tagline because it's easy to remember. So everybody remembers earthquakes is "Drop, Cover, and Hold On." And I hope everybody's going to do that at 10:17 on October 17th because that's the Great Shakeout Day. Our tagline for this program is "Get Inside, Stay Inside, Stay Tuned." Because what we're looking at is the potential disaster is fallout from a nuclear detonation. Very survival if you get deep into a building, you stay covered inside of a building until authorities announce that it's clear to come out. It's not an immediate threat. Luckily, we have geography on our side a little bit, so there'll be several hours of time before it gets here. But it's very easy to prepare for. So remember, get inside, stay inside, stay tuned. It's just that easy, and our little video will illustrate that. Hi, I'm Dr. Robert Levin. I'm the Ventura County Public Health Officer. I'm also a husband and a father. The video you're about to see is intended to increase your awareness about the steps you and your family should take to protect yourselves in the event of a nuclear explosion. Ventura County began to prepare our response to nuclear terrorism in 2006. The purpose of this message is for prevention and not because of a known threat. Now, we want to share this information with our county residents in the same way we do for earthquakes, wildfires, and tsunamis. For more information, visit us on the web at readyventura county dot org or call us
Thank you very much.
You're not listening to me. Here, if you don't produce... Ducking and covering.
Well, why don't you get up off your Cold War corduroys and come shelter in place with the rest of us?
Why?
If you want to stay alive, you got to get inside.
As deep inside of the building as possible.
You think these thin glass windows are going to protect you and your 401K from dangerous radioactive fallout?
You can't.
Get inside, stay inside, stay tuned. For more information on how you can survive a nuclear explosion, visit us on the web at readyventura county dot org.
If you want to stay alive, you've got to get inside.
Kind of an upbeat message. I just wanted to reiterate, readyventura county dot org is the website. You can show this video to your coworkers or family, and there's a copy that's going to be played on your community television channel. And there's extensive information, brochures, and several languages about this. But we want everybody just to remember, get inside, stay inside, and stay tuned. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. I think this was very, very vital information. The County Health Department is conducting town hall meetings throughout the county, and the Public Works Director, Jay Spurgeon, and I attended the presentation a couple of weeks ago. And we thought it was so important that it needed to be presented at a council meeting so that we can reach more people, those who perhaps watch the council meeting. All right. And next up is really one of my most favorite things to do on the dais, and that is to invite Cabrillo Music Artistic Director, Director Louis Wilkenfeldt, to the podium. And I'm introducing you from the dais rather than over there because I'm looking forward to the number that I'm just about to hear.
You're in the right place.
So, welcome.
Then I'll stand at this one. Thank you. We're pleased to be back. I'll be very brief because I want to get to the music here. But I want to let you know that what's happened since the last time I was here, our last production, Legally Blonde, the musical, was nominated for six Ovation Awards, which is the LA's version of the, Southern California's version of the Tony Awards, including Best Musical. It's only the fourth Cabrillo musical ever to be nominated for Best Musical. The awards are in early November, and we're crossing our fingers for some more support of the city of Thousand Oaks when we win some of those awards. I also want to let you know that our Cabrillo Kids and our Cabrillo Stars went to senior centers all over, Thousand Oaks, West Lake, Agoura, West Hills, and other cities. And we've been performing at senior centers where folks can't come to see our shows. The half of the month of August was dedicated to this, so we were pretty much everywhere. Also, if you came to see Legally Blonde, you saw all of our animals in need of rescue, and I'm really proud to tell you that many of them found new homes thanks to the support of our audiences at Legally Blonde, the musical. Our new season has begun. It's our 20th anniversary season. Obviously, Kiss Me Kate, which I'll be talking about tonight, Forever Plaid, and then In the Heights, the brand-new Tony-winning musical, and we'll end next summer with Bye Bye Birdie. Now, as far as Kiss Me Kate goes, this is the first time it's ever been performed in the Civic Arts Plaza. We were really looking to start our new season with a show that had never been done here by any company, and we found it in Kiss Me Kate. It is also, the star of the show is Davis Gaines, if you know Davis Gaines by name. That's great. And if not, you'll know him by reputation. He is Southern California's longest-running Phantom in Phantom of the Opera. He's played the role more than anybody else. He's making his Cabrillo Music Theater debut, his Thousand Oaks debut. We've been in rehearsal for several weeks, and it's a wild, high-energy show. We have a cast of 31, a full 17-piece professional orchestra. The run is from October 18th through the 27th, right next door here at the Cavali Theatre. And as always, tickets are on sale at Ticketmaster, at the Civic Arts Plaza box office, or at cabriolmusictheater dot com, and theater is spelled with an R-E at the end. It is recommended for all ages. As you might expect with a Cole Porter musical, there's a bit of sophistication in the lyrics. You'll hear that tonight. Most of it goes over the heads of the kids. And it's very clever and funny, and I've been watching rehearsals. In fact, we're heading back over to rehearsals in just a few minutes. And we're having a great time there. We cannot wait to spring this show on you. Too darn hot from this moment on. Another opening, another show. So in love. Brush up your Shakespeare. And the song that we're about to have performed. I wanted to let you know also that we are doing our Education in the Arts program along with Kiss Me Kate. Of course, it's based on Taming of the Shrew, the Shakespeare play. We've been distributing study guides to all of the schools. We're encouraging teachers and educators to give extra credit to their kids who will come see the show and then write a paper on the show and tie together what they're learning in school with what they can learn on stage, watching a show like Kiss Me Kate. So I'm very pleased, as we're about to do this song, to introduce three people to you. Two of our cast members, Reba Burr and Scott Riordan, and our accompanist Lloyd Cooper. And I want to let you know that we, you know, we do our work with the military. We'll be doing our Naval Base show this holiday season. But this Friday, we're going back to the annual Navy Ball. This was at the request of Captain Vasquez of the Naval Base. He wanted us to perform. Scott and Reba are going to perform. Lloyd is going to be playing at the piano, and they will be representing not just Cabrillo Music Theater but all of the city of Thousand Oaks this Friday night when we entertain for the annual Navy Ball. So here with a song from Kiss Me Kate are Scott Riordan and Reba Burr and Lloyd Cooper at the piano. Enjoy.
How in hell can you be jealous when you know, baby, I'm your slave? I'm just mad for you, and I'll always be. But naturally, if a custom-tailored vet asks me out for something wet, when the vet begins to pet, I cry, "Hooray!" But I'm always true to you, darling, in my fashion. Yes, I'm always true to you, darling, in my way. I enjoy a tender pass by the boss of Boston, Mass., though the pass is middle-class and not that big. Oh, but I'm always true to you, darling, in my fashion, yeah! Yes, I'm always true to you, darling, in my way. There's a madman known as Mac who is planning to attack. If his mad attack means a Cadillac, okay! But I'm always true to you, darling, in my fashion, hi! Yes, I'm always true to you, darling, in my way. I am asked to have a meal by a big tycoon in steel. If the meal includes a deal, except I may. But I'm always true to you, darling, in my fashion, hi, I know, yeah! Yes, I'm always true to you, darling, in my way. I could never curl my lip to a dazzling diamond clip, though the clip meant let rip. I'll not say nee! But I'm always true to you, darling, in my fashion. Yes, I'm always true to you, darling, in my way. There's an oil man known as Tex who is keen to give me checks. And his checks are fear mean that sex is here to stay. But I'm always true to you, darling, in my fashion. Yes, I'm always true to you, darling, in my way. Thank you, guys.
I want to thank Reba and Scott. They're here on their dinner break from rehearsal. And if you've been to Cabrillo shows, you'll recognize Scott Riordan as our prince dauntless in Once Upon a Mattress, Reba Burr as Sally Brown in You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown. We hope you will all join us at Kiss Me Kate, right next door at the Civic Arts Plaza from the 18th through the 27th. Thanks for sharing some of your evening with us, and have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Boy, that was a hot number. Can't wait to see it. Excellent. Okay, now we will get to more serious business away from the entertainment. And Madam Clerk, would you please open public comments? This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or in a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Seven people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining. Thank you. And our first speaker is Nick Fotheringham, followed by Bill Oakes and Gail Henninger.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I really love the entertainment. My name is Nick Fotheringham, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. According to the 2010 census, there are over 16,000 residents of Thousand Oaks between the ages of 55 and 64. And the national median retirement savings in that age category is a mere $12,000. And although we might expect that the residents of Thousand Oaks are a little better off than the national average, we might also expect that there are going to be several thousand of our current residents who will approach retirement having to severely downsize their expectations, including their expectations for what they can afford in the way of housing. These boomers will join current seniors who have lost their retirement savings as victims of scams or abuse and who may also need more affordable housing. Our current inventory of such housing stands at slightly over 1,000 units, and that's for all age groups, not just seniors. This is clearly far below the anticipated demand. Some may believe that if we don't provide affordable housing, low-income seniors will simply go away. I doubt that many seniors will readily leave their friends, their doctors, and nearly everything else that's familiar to them to seek a better life in another community. This is a young person's game. And why should they leave? They helped build Thousand Oaks. In our newspaper column last week, Betty Berry reminded us that isolation is a prime factor in cases of abuse. Forcing seniors out of the community imposes isolation. Suggesting that seniors will simply make new friends if forced to live elsewhere with other seniors is naive. A housing element to our general plan, which was recently revised for the next seven years, contains some empathy for seniors in need of affordable housing, but very little in the way of solutions. City policy has been to accept donations from market-rate developers in lieu of their building affordable housing and to make this Affordable Housing Trust Fund available to many mansions to leverage the construction of high-density alternatives. This policy fails when many mansions is unable to find suitable locations within the city. With your leadership, we need to seek more effective ways to integrate our seniors into the community, not isolate them or attempt to drive them out of town. I urge you to get out in front of this problem. Since the general plan does not offer solutions and city policy seems ineffective at the moment, I request that you direct city staff to work with many mansions, the Council on Aging, and other entities you deem appropriate to develop a specific plan for affordable senior housing in our community. At the very least, such a plan would enable us to elevate this discussion beyond the one-project, one-neighborhood level where it seems to be bogged down at the moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Oakes, followed by Gail Henninger and Andy Levine.
Hello, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Bill Oakes. I'm from Thousand Oaks. I just have some comments about trying to bring closure to some thing with many mansions here. I am one of the community representatives that represents 400 members that oppose the Mini Mansions' proposed development at 20E East Hillcrest Drive. It's currently in a suspended state. I represent the Glenwood Place track of single-family homes. The other areas represented were East Hillcrest Drive from Erbs Road down to Skyline, Lone Oak Drive, North Caneo School Road, Las Felas Road, McKenzie Court, and other neighboring streets. Since the development is in a suspended state, we didn't deem it necessary to have numerous opposition supporters to attend and speak at this meeting. We would like your assistance in determining what the future is on the project to help our community attain some type of official closure so we could move onward. I have a lot of people contacting me regarding the proposed development at 20E East Hillcrest Drive and wanting to know what suspended means for the project. I've reiterated the information provided by the city council to people, but there's still a lot of confusion occurring. I've reached out to the city of Thousand Oaks Planning Department, and there has not been an official withdrawal at this time from many mansions on the development. I've reached out to the developer, many mansions, too, and they are working on getting everything completed quickly, but have diverted some of the delay and the decisions back to the city of Thousand Oaks. We want to know if there could be a complete withdrawal to the proposed development, and we are also looking to obtain some official end on the site's location as it pertains to any future zoning attempts by the developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oakes. I believe we will have some answers to your questions in just a couple of minutes. Next speaker is Gail Henninger, followed by Andy Levine and Sharon Morett.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Gail Henninger. I live in Thousand Oaks at the Ranch Mobile Home Park. You have been hearing a lot about us and from us lately, and I wanted to issue an open invitation for you to come and visit, to see where we live and how we live. We are on Las Felas, just west of Caneo School Road. It's actually within walking distance of here. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Henninger, if any of the council members or staff would like to indeed meet with you, how would they contact you? Can you perhaps give the information to Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Would that be okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Andy Levine, followed by Sharon Morett and Vic Abruzzo.
Andy Levine, you're very popular.
Andy Levine, Newbury Park, California. And I'm just responding to something that was in the paper, that Brownlee wants you guys to write a letter to Congress about finding a way out of this budget. But the problem is, she's just supporting one issue. I mean, this had never happened before. I mean, our other person that represented us never asked for Thousand Oaks help. And the thing, too, with the budget, I mean, they should be able to figure out for themselves. They should not be having people saying, oh. The problem, too, is people don't understand what this budget's going to do for Obamacare. It's going to wreak havoc to everybody's medical. They go, oh, it's going to be okay. You're going to still be covered. But Nancy Pelosi, she goes, we have to read the bill, so we have to pass the bill so then we can read it, then we can see what's in it. But the political people in Washington have to realize, if they're going to put Obamacare on everybody, then they should be having it for all of Congress, no more taking a pass. If they want it for everybody, then they should be included in everything. So, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Sharon Moret, followed by Vic Abruzzo and Kay Sekra.
Sharon Moret, Newbury Park. Good evening, Council and community. I've heard that Thousand Oaks has an agenda suggested by Brownlee to write a letter to the House of Representatives to ask the House of Representatives to pass a clean continuing resolution and send it to the Senate to end the shutdown of the federal government. This is a political issue and largely a Democrat stance. Thousand Oaks needs to refrain from entering into this arena. Nothing is clean, and we shouldn't continue to be over $17 trillion in debt. We need to budget from the revenue received and not continue to spend more and borrow more. The House has already agreed to pass along a continuation measure, except for Obamacare, until the deficit discussion takes place. This was rejected by the President and Senator Reed. If any letter is sent, it should be to Congress and the President to face up to the trillions of dollars that our nation is in debt and to wake up and take immediate action on this and not add another program for our taxes to support. No one wants the government to shut down. The President and congressional leaders need to negotiate and put everything on the table in compromise. In Thousand Oaks, we need to work on our budget and keep it balanced. If the city gets involved politically and writes letters on behalf of Democrats, this will only increase friction and create less harmony in our community. Basically, the President said that he would be President of the United States and not act in a partisan manner. Instead, he has acted in a partisan way. He stated that under Obamacare, Americans would be able to keep their doctors and insurance. He said that it would not be a tax. He stated that the funding for this coverage for millions more people would be paid for by dealing with fraud, waste, and abuse. He said that under Obamacare, more medical procedures would be covered, and it would be more affordable than one's present insurance. All these statements have not proven to be the case. The President acted like the Pied Piper when he gave us facts about the Obamacare bill, which turned out not to be facts. The bill needs to be repealed, as it was based upon on truths. Instead of toppling our medical system, we need to find a way of ensuring those who have pre-existing conditions, those who have used up their cap, and also for those who have low wages. And I just feel that the city should not be involved in writing a letter regarding the shutdown to ask the House to pass the continuation bill. There's more to it, and our city needs to be objective in this way.
Thank you, Mrs. Moret. Next speaker is Vic Abruzzo, followed by Kay Sekra.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Council, and thank you for this opportunity. I come to speak on the other development project proposed on Hillcrest. I want to make it abundantly clear that most of us who opposed the Many Mansions project on Hydam equally on Hillcrest are equally opposed to the Hydam project as well. I had some further concerns this week. I believe the sign that was posted on Lone Oak suggested that the developer was Hydam Development Corp. I mention that because as of October 5th, the Secretary of State's website reported that Hydam Development Corporation was a suspended corporation. So perhaps it may be part of our planning process to make sure we understand exactly who the developer is. Think there's some concerns. Again, while there may indeed be a need in the future for senior housing, it is truly hoped that you can find a place that is relatively close and very accessible to hospital services, public safety services, and those other things that can reasonably expected to be the needs of that senior population. Those thoughts in mind, I thank you kindly.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker is Kay Sekra.
I'm Kay Sekra. I live in Thousand Oaks. This doesn't seem to get easier. This is not in my comfort zone, so I wrote down my thoughts this time. Not long ago, a friend of mine wanted to build a spare room above her garage here in Thousand Oaks in a neighborhood where there are two-story homes. One neighbor, for whatever reason, opposed her plans, and the city denied her permission. My friend took no for an answer. She did not try to change the zoning. She didn't accuse her neighbor of denigrating guests who might stay there. She didn't act like she was above the rules everyone else has to follow. She didn't call her neighbors elitists. Yet amid protests of an entire neighborhood, our entire neighborhood, Mr. Asa wants to build a three-story-tall, 122-unit facility on the hillside directly across the street from my home. It would tower above our home, appearing up to four, five stories high, four or five stories high. It would completely block our view of the beautiful hillside, and the residents that lived there would be able to look down into our pool area where our teens in their bikinis swim with their friends. Unless we cover our windows, they would also be able to see into my 15-year-old son's bedroom in our kitchen and dining room. But Mr. Asa just told both the Acorn and Ventura County Star that his project has no immediate neighbors. He says, "We do not impede any neighbors' views. There's nobody in close proximity who will be directly affected." He also told the paper, "People want to put seniors in faraway places like they are being quarantined. They are being treated as outcasts. Surely by now, you're aware that most of us volunteer to help those less fortunate than ourselves. Surely by now, you know that we are concerned about our seniors, especially those in our neighborhood who reside in the Ranch Mobile Home Park, who we now know desperately need the city's compassion in their current situation. Surely by now, you know that we simply ask that developers follow the same zoning rules the rest of us have to follow. Hillcrest Drive in this neighborhood are already overcrowded. We have too many high-density projects in our area. The Hydam project is inappropriate for a residential neighborhood. There are single-family homes on all four sides of that project."
Thank you, Mrs. Sekra.
Thank you.
We also have two statement cards regarding the Many Mansions issue and the assisted living project. All right, so that concludes public comments. Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. So in tonight's public comments, you heard a variety of things, including three areas of interest, one of which is comments about the proposed senior housing project off of Hillcrest by Many Mansions, and the other dealing with a proposed assisted living project across the street on Hillcrest. So you did hear about Many Mansions putting its proposed project in a suspended state. We are still working with them to obtain clarity on the direction that they're going to be going. It looks like they're not going forward, but that has not been officially conveyed at this point. But what we will do, because we're hearing about the uncertainty that's out there, and that appears to be what's bothering the neighbors. And we did have, as Council knows, and to remind everybody and those tuning in, that we did have a meeting with representatives of the neighbors and Many Mansions, and it was a productive meeting with respect to getting the information to both sides about what's out there. So what we will do, if it's okay with Council, is I'll have staff follow up those who are here tonight and the other representatives of the different resident groups, and keep them in the loop about where we are and what's going forward. And you can rest assured that if, and it's a big if, any proposed project comes forward to the Planning Commission or City Council, you'll be made aware of that. And if there's anything else that goes on in that property, we'll work with you on that. So you'll be on the know. And the same thing with respect to the proposed assisted living project across the street. If and when that comes in front of the Planning Commission and/or City Council, we'll make sure everybody is aware. So I hope that's okay with the Council. Then we heard, we did, at the beginning of the meeting, we heard about a suggestion to work more closely with Many Mansions with respect to affordable senior housing projects and that type of thing. And as a reminder, we have a long history here in this city with our general plan and other documents and the housing element, which the Council recently adopted and we're waiting on state review, which does, in fact, do that. It delineates different portions of the community in which such housing can be obtained. We have a variety of documents, source documents and information that we'll be glad to share with the Speaker and any other interested party. And we'd be happy to schedule a meeting with that gentleman, too, and walk you through what we've done and where we're going with that. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNich. All right, and we now go to the consent calendar. I do have a public speaking card for the consent calendar, and that would be Mr. Nick Kidway.
I beg in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal Kidway. I'm a resident of Newbury Park and director of concern, citizen of Thousand Oaks since 1993. First of all, I'd like to address the minutes. I would like to draw the attention of these wonderful Hillcrest people that, if you look at the minutes, they're completely un-American. You should be organized against that. Your names are there, but not one word, forget a sentence or paragraph about as to what you said. And so, nobody knows what you have said, and this is completely contrary to what this nation stands for and what these meetings stand for. Number two, there is, again, free money being distributed. I'm talking about I, where you are getting, I think, about $300,000 from the state. And where are the T-PART people? I mean, why is there no outcry and just go after Obama, but let all the 300,000, the money being wasted? Who is the enemy? I'm glad that there's no, last time I came, there were ropes over here to protect the council people from the residents. I don't know. So they've been taken out. Thank you for the smile. But all this money is to protect us from ourselves, and the costs are so high. I've been in the internet and telecom business and all that. $40,000 to archive what's happening at the transportation center. $40,000. I mean, could be done for $4,000, maybe $10,000, but $40,000, and that's $70,000 for different things. It's free money, so that's why nobody cares. Who gives a damn if the taxpayers? I mean, you're destroying this nation. You know that slowly and slowly. And that's why, why are you dwelling into the federal business when it's none of your business and you can't take care of your own needs? I already have two minutes left. POTV, if you can show quickly. The first one shows, if you Google any city or county who's working on stopping the federal government thing, you are the only one out of about 5,000. I mean, it's unbelievable. You have nothing better to do. You are getting, in fact, Mr. Fox had said you got an F from the citizens. That report has been, I mean, work on that. Quickly show this Binner thing. It's, I mean, this is just a waste of time here. On my Facebook, somebody had put this. But this is a relevant one here. The City Hall closed, and the last one is the key. Who cares? We don't care about serving the public. Every other week, we are closed. In fact, the schedule is secret. I mean, nobody knows. I mean, they don't even put it on the website or anything. And why are you getting involved in partisan politics and getting the Republicans upset? I mean, the mayor is not even aligned with any party from what I know. Do not decline to state is her status. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Consent calendar, item seven. Are there any questions from the Council? Mr. Adam?
7K.
Okay, 7K. Anything else?
Yes.
All right, then who would like to move the remainder of the calendar? Mrs. Irwin.
I'll remove, I'll move the remainder. I won't remove. I'll move the remainder of the calendar.
Thank you. Please vote. Mr. Fox?
Motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Adam? Item 7K?
Yeah, 7K is the resolution that's being proposed. And I certainly understand the motivation behind it. There'll be a trickle-down impact to our city ultimately. I like to think of this as a government slowdown, not necessarily a government shutdown. I just want to be sure that, I mean, we're entering into some territory here where we really have no purview, but I suppose we can have an opinion. I just want to be sure that this thing is phrased in as nonpartisan a manner as we can put it.
Andy, yes, I need to add that, I will direct your attention to the supplemental packet.
Uh-oh.
So, for that particular item. We have three supplemental packets. It would be number two.
Well, I don't know. I don't have time to read the supplemental packet at the moment, but I'm just looking at the resolution itself, and there's some wordage in here that I think maybe we ought to think about rewording, just to be consistent. Because after all, it says right in the resolution that this is a philosophical standoff by partisan politics. And we go on to ask for, in the very next sentence, we go on to ask for a continuing resolution. Okay, fine. But if you go to the next page, we then refer to the continuing resolution as a clean resolution. And then the next sentence, we say, "No amendments or gimmicks." And then the final sentence, we call it a clean resolution again. And anybody who's following this knows darn well that one side is calling for the quote-unquote "clean" resolution, the other side is calling for a resolution with amendments. So when you say "clean," in my mind, you're getting partisan. I, yeah, I guess I could get behind this thing, but I just, I think, in the very title, I think we should take out the word "clean," and I think we should take out in that third to last sentence, "clean" again, and then the final sentence, "clean." We need to refer this as to simply a continuing resolution. And I would like to pull this business of no amendments or gimmicks either, because now we're getting into the very heart of the debate, and let's not get into that. We just want, nobody doesn't want the government restarted. We'll get that across, but let's take out some of these more biased words.
Thank you.
Does that make sense to everybody?
No, I completely understand. Actually, the National League of Cities has called upon all of its member cities across the country to implore Congress to pass a resolution, to write letters. So what we're doing is actually in keeping with the direction of the National League of Cities, of which we are a member.
Okay.
And so that is something that is extremely important to do that. I don't see it really as a partisan issue. This is a, unfortunately, this is unprecedented in a sense, and it will affect us. It will eventually affect Thousand Oaks, if it hasn't already. We know that in a few weeks, certain checks will not be arriving in people's homes who are expecting it, and we would like to avoid that because... are expecting it, and we would like to avoid that because, as I mentioned, this is something that, yes, it's happening at the national level in Washington, D.C., but it will inevitably affect us whether we like it or not.
No, I couldn't agree with you more, and I just think that we can simply state, basically, reopen the government, but we don't need to tell them how to do it.
That's, that's fine.
We don't need to tell them how to do it, and if we're asking them to pass a clean resolution, we're taking a side.
Well, remember, it's never been done, because budgeting has never been done like this before in piecemeal fashion. But I'd like to get some input from the other council members, whether eliminating the word "clean" is going to, and then...
I know it's a small word, but it's a big word.
Well, yes, whether that will appease everybody. Mrs. Irwin?
A small, big word.
Yeah, I, you know, I can, I certainly understand Mr. Adams' concerns, because we did have a few phone calls that we are taking a partisan stance on this, and that's absolutely not the case. What we want is, we want the government to reopen, and I, the Thousand Oaks City Council is in no position to make a comment one way or another, or take a position on Obamacare or how the government should open. So I think what we really need to do is implore Congress to come to a consensus, or if we take out "clean," then certainly that would be one way to do it. But to, you know, I don't think we can really talk about this as a government slowdown when you talk about how many people at the military bases are involved, how many defense contractors, that, you know, at the military base, there's a possibility that they're going to get paid eventually, but the defense contractors that are being laid off, they have, they have no possibility of getting paid for the time that the government is shut. And there are a whole number of programs, housing vouchers and women and infant supplemental feeding, and parks being closed. It's not a, for people that are affected, this is not a slowdown. This is, this is an irresponsible shutting of the government, and, you know, I blame both sides. They need to come together, because this is, for us, it's a local issue. So whatever we can do, if there's some way to phrase it that is more, that you could get behind, then I would certainly be for that. I don't want it to be, this to be a partisan statement at all.
Very well. Okay, Mr. Price?
Yeah, I have taken a position in the past that we don't, the council of Thousand Oaks does not belong, involved in issues of national significance. But this one here, I think, does, in fact, impact us. As Councilmember Irwin pointed out, we have, in our backyard, Point Mugu Naval Air Station there, and there are a number of those civilian contractors who live in our area. So we have the National Park Service Office here in the city of Thousand Oaks. I don't know yet whether we've seen any impact from that shutdown, but I do think that the shutdown of some of the National Park Services in the area here will eventually lead to that. There will be an economic impact to Thousand Oaks, and that's something that I think that, while I don't disagree with, or I completely agree with the nonpartisan stance that we need to take, I do think that it's important. In particular, because the National League of Cities is asking for support, that we take a position. I, I'm not against removing or changing some of the language in the resolution here, and if we can come up with something that is a little more palatable to everyone, then I think that would be best.
Yeah, I think at this point, we are, as suggested, it has been suggested, we remove the word "clean" as well as in the last whereas on page two, the last one, two, three, four, five words with no amendments or gimmicks. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me, let me ask to amend the resolution, and I'll give you the language in a second after I make my comments. I have long held that local government should not enmesh themselves in national or even state issues that don't have a direct impact on our city. It's been said here before. I think most people that follow these issues recognize they are extremely complex. There's a lot going on that we have absolutely no idea what's happening. We only know what's reported in the news, and I think all of us recognize there's a lot more going on in Washington, D.C. other than what you hear on Fox News or CNN or reading in the LA Times. We have our own issues here in Thousand Oaks. We were elected to handle municipal issues in our community. The folks here in Thousand Oaks expect us to pay attention to our city, things that affect our city, and in my view, not get involved in some of these ancillary issues while they're important, no question about that, and they could arguably affect people that live here in Thousand Oaks, either directly or indirectly. What we swore to do was represent the city of Thousand Oaks, and so I'm not in favor of sending anything. I recognize the majority of the council has a different perspective. I would just say that, just because the National League of Cities asks, we're not obligated to answer. And having sat on the Board of Directors for the California League of Cities, I can just tell you that that is not a nonpartisan exercise. There are folks that have very clear political slant, one way or the other. I'm not making any value judgment. I'm just letting the council know that just something that comes from the National League of Cities isn't necessarily as nonpartisan one would believe. And we have no idea, as we sit here today, what side that may be. We don't know. In fact, I would even go farther and say that those that actually are affected by the government shutdown, they may be supporting one side or the other. You don't know that either. Healthcare is a very personal issue, and we really don't know. And so I think what is fair to say, an assumption is, we represent everyone. These are nonpartisan seats. There's no question in my mind that, as we sit here today, we represent folks in Thousand Oaks that are of the belief that the national healthcare as, what is in law today, is a good thing. And we represent folks that think that it is a bad thing. So my recommendation to the council would be, stay out of it. Absent that, I am proposing to make some amendments to the language that may be amenable to the council, and I'm not going to make a, I am not going to make a grandstand vote and vote no. I just want it, from the council perspective, we have a long history of staying out of these things. I think it has served us well. I think other cities that weigh in on these political issues are making a mistake, and I just urge the council to shelve this one and not take, not take really a side at all. And you can make the argument that there is an impact to some of the folks we represent. I just say, as a general rule, it's a bad idea for cities to get involved with this.
What is your suggestion, Mr. Fox?
Okay. So with that, I'm going to amend the resolution in the first attachment. I don't know if there's any drafts. And that would be, first, to change the title of the resolution to read, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Thousand Oaks Urging Congressional Representatives to Resolve the Federal Budget Impasse as Soon as Possible to End the Federal Shutdown." That is the title of the resolution.
Okay.
I'm also moving that we delete the second to the last whereas, pass a clean error, the final whereas in terms of gimmicks, and we change the therefore to read as follows. "The City Council of the City of Thousand Oaks Urges Congressional Representatives to Resolve the Federal Budget Impasse as Soon as Possible to End the Federal Shutdown."
Okay. Madam Clerk, did you get that? Okay. I also wanted to mention, thank you, Mr. Fox, that this is actually not the first time we've weighed in on a national issue. We've actually passed resolutions before that dealt with Citizens United or global warming and global climate, climate change. So this is not unusual, actually. But I'm quite amenable to accepting your amendments to the resolution, and I think, is the rest of the council as well?
I just would ask, is there any interest in not taking a position at all?
Well, if I could respond to Councilmember Fox here, I don't, I think the way you phrased it, it's as if we're taking a position on one side or the other, and I look at this as a completely neutral position here that we're taking. We've, in effect, removed the language that would appear to be partisan, and I think now what we are simply urging Congress to do is get back to work. Let the people get back to work and get back to doing your jobs. So with that...
Fair enough.
Yes, I think that's how most of us actually see it.
Yeah. Just philosophically, I think city councils need to pay attention to their cities.
Well, we do.
And I don't disagree with that.
We do.
All the time.
All the time, yes, we do. All right.
All right, do you have my amendment, Madam Mayor?
We do have the amendment, and Madam City Clerk has your wording as well, and it's changed in the title as well as in the therefore, and we are removing the second to last and last whereas.
I don't know if there's a motion on the table, but I'll go ahead and move...
That would be your motion, since you made the amendments.
Sure.
Okay. Any comments on the motion?
The guy that doesn't want to do it is moving for it.
All right, no comments? Please vote. The motion carries five zero. Thank you. And that is now our consent calendar. We now move to our department report, which deals with our citywide goals and objectives, and this will be presented by Rachel Wagner, the acting assistant to the city manager. But first, we will hear introductory remarks from Mr. Mitnick.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, before Rachel walks you through the report, and she'll give you a summary and hit the main points, but I just want to remind the council that we do this every year, and this is essentially the report card on the organization with respect to implementing the goals, objectives, top priorities, et cetera, that the council has adopted. So it's our way to be accountable to the council. It's also, we do it every two years. So we do one year, we do the first year, and then the second year, we give you a two-year report card. So what you have tonight is the comprehensive two-year report card, and the document itself is available on the website, in our libraries, and in City Hall here for the public to review. I do want to remind the council that this is common practice here in Thousand Oaks. It's become part of the landscape here, but it is relatively unusual. The vast majority of local governments in California don't do this. So we're proud of this. It does take a lot of time and effort, but it clearly is a best management practice that has served the organization well. And we also incorporate this into the performance review process for each department head and their staff in their departments. So how successful we are in implementing these goals and objectives and the top priorities, it does tie to the evaluations of the department heads and their managers. It's also a very flexible set of tools, if you will, in that we're constantly reviewing them, revising them, and updating them. And so it's not an end-all, be-all. It's just one way to show accountability, engage the success of the organization. And I will tell you, by implementing this best management practice, and we are among a few that do it, it does actually result in direct benefits to the taxpayers in terms of lower costs when we issue debt, the bond rating agencies like this, and we tend to get a better rating as a result of doing stuff like this. And then before Rachel starts, I want to acknowledge her hard work throughout the year to stay on top of this, and the department heads for being so willing to do this in a time when we've cut over 100 positions and laid off a number of folks that they still are dedicating the time and effort to this process. So with that, Rachel will walk you through. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. The document before you is a two-year summary report for fiscal years 2011 to '12 and 2012 to '13. City Council Top 10 Priorities, Citywide Goals and Objectives, Budget Performance Measures and Benchmarks. This document is prepared annually. The one-year status update that was presented to you last fall was essentially a progress report to this document, the complete two-year report card as indicated by our city manager. All of the data included in the report was compiled and finalized based on input and statistics from all city departments. Now let's take a look at the document. The report is structured into several sections, beginning with a citywide organizational chart, followed by various policy documents approved by City Council in April 2012, and citywide goals and objectives, budget performance measures, and it concludes with benchmark comparisons between the city of Thousand Oaks and five other cities. Each year, City Council sets 10 specific priorities on which significant projects, programs, or policy matters they would like to see accomplished for the upcoming fiscal year. Here's a look at Council's top 10 commitments for the last fiscal year, 2012, 2013, in an abbreviated format. Maintain a balanced budget. Maintain existing levels of police services. Continue negotiations with the fire department. Obtain funding for the 10123 project and complete landscaping on the 23 freeway. Acquire more open space and manage existing. Work with the successor agency oversight board to ensure approval of enforceable obligation payment schedule list. Increase attendance and improve programming at Cavalier and Share Forum Theaters. Enhance environmental programs. Renew agreement with the school district to provide access for the community to sports facilities. And lastly, develop a plan for undeveloped Rancho Canejo and Seventh Day Church properties. As you can see, all 10 priorities have been completed, or certain components were completed during the past year, with some still ongoing into the next fiscal year, 2013, 2014. A detailed status update with summaries for each priority can be found beginning on page six of the document. In addition to setting 10 specific priorities each year, City Council also sets 10 broad citywide goals labeled A through J, which cover all city departments and are revised every two years. Here are the 10 goals Council approved to be implemented during the fiscal year 2011, '12, and 2012, '13 budget cycle. Staff developed nearly 230 objectives which fall within each of those 10 citywide goals. These objectives were tracked and analyzed throughout the year and updated at the year end. As you can see in this breakdown by departments, the majority of objectives were completed and are ongoing into the next fiscal year. Performance measures were also included in this report as a way for staff to measure progress towards programs. The 100 performance measures included were tracked by staff throughout the year and will continue to be reviewed and revised over time to ensure that programs are planned, budgeted, and implemented appropriately. In addition to the performance measures, benchmarks were used in the report to better understand how the city of Thousand Oaks compares to other cities in the region or with similar population size. Four Ventura County cities, Camarillo, Oxnard, Simi Valley, and Ventura, and one city in northwest Los Angeles County with a similar population of Thousand Oaks, Santa Clarita, were compared with Thousand Oaks service levels. Before we look at some of the benchmark results, it's important to note that exact apples-to-apples comparisons are difficult, because not all cities are alike, and the benchmarking results should be read in light of certain differences involving various service levels such as law enforcement, libraries, and public transit, as indicated in the document. In this year's report, which is unique, a scorecard was included showing where Thousand Oaks ranks in comparison to the other cities. You can see a snapshot of this scorecard on page 159 of the report, showing the areas where the city performs above average, average, and below average. Here are a few observations and samples of each of the ranking. Here's an area where the city of Thousand Oaks consistently performs the best, and that is the lowest crime rate per thousand residents. A recent FBI report ranking Thousand Oaks as the number-one safest city in California with a population over 100,000 and number four in the nation as a whole is a good result of this. An area where the city fell in the middle in average is unemployment rates when compared to the other four, five cities. And the last benchmark we'll take a look at is where the city fell short and needs improvement, and that is the number of riders on a fixed municipal transit system. Thousand Oaks had the lowest transit ridership for cities of its size. You can see all 40 benchmarks in their charts in detail at the back of the document, beginning You can see all 40 benchmarks in their charts in detail at the back of the document, beginning on page 160. This concludes my presentation. The report can be downloaded online at www.toaks.org/citygoals. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and we have staff from each department to also answer any specifics. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this very detailed report. I just wanted to point out very quickly the benchmarks on the back of this Goals and Objective binder. We are on page 159. I see that we only have two lowest or below-average grades on the numbers of riders on a fixed route, as was shown, and then the municipal water rates for average households. And while we have a low score on that, I have to say that municipal water rates for average households is still lower than those of the private purveyors in the City of Thousand Oaks. That's important to point out. I also like, on page 160, the comparisons to other cities. I thought that those were really very, very helpful, and thank you for going through the effort of doing that. Any questions or comments by staff? Mr. Adams?
Very happy to see that we got a best grade, and not surprised either, in our crime rate, which is incredibly low. So that's, congratulations to Sheriff Pentis and his staff. Without public safety, I mean, what do we have? You know, and every poll, every survey I've ever read, public safety always ranks number one concern for the residents, and we are certainly filling the bill in that regard. You know, as I go through the report, our report card's good. And this might be, and thank you, Ms. Wagner, for your presentation. It was very good. Thank you. I just have a quick question about the transit business. We've made a big investment in our transit system, Thousand Oaks Transit, we have the Dial-A-Ride, and yet, in a way, it doesn't look like it's paying off, considering the ridership is so low. So my question might be more of a philosophical one than anything else. In this age of dwindling resources, I'll coin a phrase here, are we over-resourcing our transit system, considering the ridership that we're getting? That might be a good question for Mr. Spurgeon. Over-resourcing. You like that?
Well, that's a good question, Councilmember Adams. One of the things I can say is that you do have to consider the cities and the agencies that we're benchmarking this particular item against. Gold Coast Transit is a much larger transit system. It serves all of the western half of Ventura County. So clearly, they're going to have more ridership from a volume standpoint than the City of Thousand Oaks. We're a little bit less than Simi Valley, which is probably more comparable than either Gold Coast, or, and again, the City of Santa Clarita, that's really not a good comparison from this perspective, because they serve a much, much larger area with their transit system, including county areas around that, the Santa Clarita Valley and whatnot. So I will mention that just right off, and that's reflected, of course, in the scores, per se. When you look at other of our transit benchmarking, and I'm looking at, I'm looking at page, that was 192, and then if you go to 193, fare box recovery percentage, transit passengers per revenue hour, those are two other measures where we actually compare much more favorably. The other thing I'll just say to close here is that the number of Dial-A-Ride and ADA passengers that we provide, those rides are actually much greater than our comparable cities, Simi Valley, Camarillo, and we even are very comparable to Gold Coast in the ADA and Dial-A-Ride ridership. So it's kind of a, we're a unique community in that we don't have maybe the best, or the highest ridership for fixed route, but we do have a very, very high and successful Dial-A-Ride and ADA program.
Would we need, if you look at the transit system as a whole, then would we need to maybe shift resources to where the demand is the greatest? You mentioned Dial-A-Ride. Would that make sense to?
Well, I think we have, which is reflected in the success and the ridership that we have in those programs. But clearly, those are things that we look at, really on a constant basis, how can we best utilize our resources? How many fixed routes? How many, number of buses on each route, and et cetera? So we're constantly looking at those. And this is helpful information for us to, you know, to guide our program.
Yeah. I'm glad to hear that about Dial-A-Ride. That's a great service, really well-received by the community, and it's a great thing that we do here. So, yeah, okay, so we'll learn from this and proceed on. Thanks, Mr. Spurgeon.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Fox?
Just an observation, on page nine, this is, deals with the levels of frontline police service. May not be a big deal, and I'm sure it was an oversight by staff, but the second sentence reads, "This effort is largely done by the support of the community and the City Council, as well as the daily efforts of the officers of the Thousand Oaks Police Department, police officers working in a frontline capacity." At a minimum, we need to flip that. We have that backwards, because the reality is, is the firefighters and the police officers are going to do the great job that they do day in and day out, with or without the support of the City Council. And they prove that across the nation, time and time again, with budget cuts. Now, we have not done that here, but it is a small thing, but I think it needs to be changed. This council does support our police officers and firefighters, in this case, police officers, but the fact of the matter is, they're going to do it with or without our support. They need to be first. So I'm going to move that we amend page nine and rewrite that.
We can certainly do that. And I think what staff probably was thinking is that without the finances, the resources, and the money that we give and provide, the officers or firefighters may not be able to do it. But I certainly see your point of view, and certainly would be amenable to changing, to rephrasing that particular sentence. Mr. Mitnick?
No problem.
Okay, no problem. Very good. Any other question? Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any other questions or comments regarding this?
Yeah, I would just note, on the benchmarking, on that same, on that same line of thinking, both for the frontline officers and to the City Council, we have balanced the need for police services with maintaining a very high level of metric-based decision-making with respect to our crime rates. I, for one, would say that it's a good thing that our crime rate is at the very top in terms of how low it is, yet our police spending, comparable to other areas, is not the highest, but it's mid-range. That tells us we're getting a pretty big bang for the buck, so to speak. And so, to me, that goes to City Manager, City Staff, certainly the Police Department, for making the recommendations on budget and staffing consistent with what they need, but we're not overspending in an effort to achieve the level of service that we want. So to me, that was an important metric.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And I also noticed, on the City Clerk Department, number of employees at Thousand Oaks stood out, and I'm not quite sure why that is. I'm looking at Madam Clerk, Linda Lawrence, because I know we did have some cutbacks there. Those employees do not include the new Ventura County employees, correct?
No, and actually, the current figures are one less employees than, for this current fiscal year, budgeted. Different cities obviously operate in different fashions. We have a very robust records management program, citywide, that two of our staff members are concentrating pretty much full-time on. So we deal with the public records requests efficiently, and our imaging system, we work towards getting more documents in our imaging system for staff, as well as the public, and looking at ways to automate our processes so they're more efficient.
Thank you. Also noticed that public school enrollment is down. We heard about senior population growing in Thousand Oaks, and then we also see how the enrollment in public schools is going down, going down every year slowly but surely. I think that was pretty much it. Anybody else? Mr. Fox?
I'll move for the, to receive and file the report. As I'm looking through this, I didn't catch it. It may be in here. I know that there's some capital metrics here, Mr. Mitnick. I see that the signal intersections operating level C are better. And I know we've seen it before, but have we placed in benchmarks, for example, the condition of our residential and commercial streets?
I'm looking at staff. Do we have that? I know we have level of service at intersections.
We have not benchmarked that previously.
We'd be happy to.
I think we need to do that, because as Mr. Mitnick pointed out, very few cities do this.
Sure.
Joel and I work for the City of Los Angeles, and, you know, the condition of the streets is in the newspaper all the time on how far behind they are. And I think part of it, it's a big city, and it's certainly complex, they have their issues, but I think what Mr. Mitnick's comments were is, there is no report card. There's no metric to see where they're at in terms of infrastructure. And so what I'd like to see for the next time around is a mix, and you can have a longer list. By the way, great report. These are the things that council pays attention to, and it's not necessarily the sizzling item for the viewing public. But the point that I think we need to do is, is we need to measure what we're doing. When things are well, it's great. When things become more difficult, or we see a decrease, by using this system, we're able to identify it early on. And so we don't have a situation where 10 years down the road, we find that our street conditions are well below what a city standard is. And the only way we're going to know that is by auditing and doing these things.
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the council, we'll be happy to add that in to next year, and if you have other items that you think about after tonight, and you want us to add them, just let us know. But I do want to remind you that just doing this exercise, a lot of cities resist it, because it's not necessarily a feel-good or positive experience, because as we go through and we look at what other cities are doing, or what our targets are, it's difficult, because we're going to come back and say, hey, we're not hitting the mark. But that's why we do this, to be able to do that. It started over 10 years ago, when we were looking at doing the Long-Term Financial Strategic Plan. This is just part of that process.
So I'm thinking, condition of streets, condition of public landscaping.
Okay.
Lighting and landscape is something that I think people talk about. Do we have appropriate lighting? Do we have appropriate landscaping? Are we maintaining that? In addition to some of the operating services, I think some of the infrastructure issues are good metrics as well.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think this was tremendously helpful, and I would go as far as to say that I think it's a great report card for the city, and it reflects well on the staff. And along those same lines, it's my understanding that during my absence last week, there was a significant wind event here. I had evidence of that in my backyard when I got home, but as Councilmember Fox brought up, things are a little different here in Thousand Oaks than they are in the City of Los Angeles, where I drove through the streets today, and there are still trees that are just laying down, blocking portions of the roadway. We don't have that here. And that's kudos to our street crew, or street tree crew that was out there during the wind. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I do have a question about the outstanding debt per capita, page 175, comparing it to Simi Valley, for example. Should we be worried about that at all? Would that be a question for Mr. Mitnick?
I'll be, Madam Mayor, I'll be happy to answer that. In fact, if you look at that, the amount of debt we have is extremely low, well below, and a reason to really be concerned. And if you look at other cities, the amount of, the debt they have is much higher. I think we're below 1%. John Adams, he's on page, she's on page 175. It shows you the outstanding debt per capita, and Thousand Oaks is near the bottom of that. We don't have that much debt outside of the redevelopment agency. Mr. Adams is walking, is walking down here. Generally, yeah, barely, but right, but both municipalities have a low amount, but if it's below 1% of the assessed value, that's generally pretty good.
Good evening, Mr. Adams.
Good evening. So just quickly, on Thousand Oaks, you see the decline from 2011 to 2012, and that was because, part of that was the redevelopment debt that had gone away. So that's not shown on our books and is not reported. As far as percentage, really, the way that we look at it, and this graph isn't reflective of that, is really our debt service. What is our expenditures for debt service, or to pay that debt related to our revenues? And debt service is, I think, about 3% of our total general fund budget, so it's not a significant amount. It's just, it's just a way of comparing. You know, and when you go to debt, and what the debt policy is, you see someone like Oxnard, that's a little higher. Part of that might be, they're actually not doing pay-as-you-go, but they are financing things. It could be on, especially for a full-service city, they could have debt for various operations that is reflective in that, in that graph. So I would not be alarmed that we're, maybe not the lowest, but certainly, that is not an unreasonable amount for our per capita.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I appreciate that explanation. And another thing I wanted to point out, on page 187, I think Thousand Oaks can be very proud of itself for having a tremendous municipal fleet using alternative fuels vehicles. And that's some, that's an area where we can actually also pat ourselves on the back. It's rather outstanding. All right, any other questions or comments? None? Before I call for a vote, Mr. Fox, did you already have a motion? I forget.
I think I moved, didn't I?
Because we do have, I think you moved, but we do have a speaker, Mr. Kidway.
Nekik Balkidway, resident of Nibery Park, director concerned, citizen of Thousand Oaks. I got chastised for speaking too fast, but it's hard to not be emotional on certain issues. Your org chart shows me and other residents on top. I suggest, and I, that has been there right from the inception, that let's dispense with the formalities and remove that from the top, because, you know, we are not really treated like that. That's why you got the F. I mean, it's a big PR exercise, which is this hearing right now. It also shows that all the multiple department heads report directly to the City Manager. I don't know if that is a change from the previous org chart, but as one who has worked with all the city managers since Mr. Brimhall, I know that the whole modus operandi of the city and most government, in general, going on for the last 200 years, is the pyramid-type of structure. And the deputy city manager is the one that actually is the work hard, and then once city manager gets into his role, then it's nirvana, because, and it's the same thing. If you are a public works director, you don't do the work. You have all these department heads that report to you, and you have a meeting with them, and you delegate, and then you expect a nice report. I don't know when it's going to change. I mean, if you, if you keep your eyes open, if you've looked at the gentleman from Facebook, who is a multi-billionaire, look at the Google people, look at his office. His office is a big room like this, and dozen assistants in the same room, with two or three laptops. And I'm not saying to go to that, but something has to change. In fact, right now, I get disgusted again, because you have a very nice brochure on the wall, advertising a deputy human rights, oh, no, human rights, that's, human resources manager for the city. Why do you need an assistant? I mean, we have a young lady here who's substituting and working to coordinate these things. You don't need to have a deputy funnel these things and be paid all those executive-level salaries. Right now, the city has over a dozen retirees that are making 100,000-plus a year, sitting at home, or going to Europe, having fun, and they will be doing it for 20, 25 years. Those are the real issues. And time is almost up, but this is not a... And time is almost up, but this is not a, you have no incentive to save money. And you, the taxes come regardless, so it's not a private enterprise. For God's sake, get back the budget task force. That's what you need to get some handle on what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. All right, Mr. Fox, did you want to restate your, your motion?
Just move to receive and file the staff report.
Did staff get the additional requests? All right, thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We now move to item number 9B. And this will be presented by Madam Clerk Linda Lawrence.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. A little background, city council did hold a study session on September 16th to review the local campaign finance ordinance. And in the staff report, attachment number two has a matrix identifying the input that city council provided to us at that meeting. Out of the 17 areas identified on the matrix, city council provided input in 14 areas and asked us to come back with additional information in three areas. One, contribution limits. Two, fundraising timeframes. And three, aggregation of contributions. In the area of contribution limits and fundraising timeframes, staff provided a table of comparison information from Ventura County Cities, the County of Ventura, and other comparable or neighboring agencies. And as you can see from the chart, which starts on page 13 of the packet, contribution limits range from as low as $150 per contributor to no limits at all. Additionally, as you can see in the chart, the fundraising timeframes vary for the different cities that do have local campaign ordinances. And the city attorney will speak about aggregation.
Thank you. In attachment three, I attempted to provide examples on the aggregation provisions and basically clarify what the aggregation provisions mean. So that set forth in attachment three. I've identified the five aggregation provisions under the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code and also the three aggregation provisions set forth under the Political Reform Act. There is some overlap. And I think that, that the takeaway from this is that when you look at the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code aggregation provisions, it, it basically breaks it down based on the type of business it is, whether it's a corporation or a partnership, because it identifies, you know, boards of directors and officers. And you might have, for instance, you might not, you might not have a board of directors in an LLC, but you'd have a board of directors, directors in a corporation. Whereas the FPPC aggregation provisions are much, are a little bit more generic, where it just talks about contributions of entities that are directed or controlled by persons. So I hope, I hope the examples make some sense. I'm here to answer any questions about the aggregation provisions. Based on these three outstanding issues, we're here to answer any questions and we're seeking clarification or input or direction on where you'd like to go with these provisions. Based on the direction received tonight, we will draft a comprehensive ordinance for city council consideration at a public hearing on November 5th. And we're available for questions.
Thank you very much. I do have a speaker card, but if council has any questions of staff, we can go ahead and do that first before I call the speaker. Okay, Mr. Kidway.
Thank you for calling me early so I can go home. Just absolutely disgusting. I mean, I wish there were no children watching. This was not televised and I could use the foul language. In fact, I'm reminded of Xena. She told me about council member who's still sitting here using kitchen cabinet talk during breaks. I mean, to have the gall to say that you care about the challengers when this is just pure and simple fraudulent, it's just a way to get more money. The two things that are not addressed previously and not today and probably would be ignored because, you know, the people don't seem to care. It's not 1998 when there was an outrage and rightly so, because the car dealers gave five and $10,000 donations to one person and got him elected. And that guy was such a failure that he doesn't even talk to anyone. No council people, nothing, no sides, because he does, he was not a people person. He didn't belong here. And in 2010, the same thing was repeated and it would have succeeded except for the city attorney. The city attorney said, well, this, this is wrong because the staff and the press, they don't care. Councilmember said that, well, the press and Mr. Kidway are the watchdog. Well, the press is not a watchdog. They don't, there's been no story run about the, the special interests that are involved in making the money. And, you know, I have maybe 500 people, 700 people that I contact. I mean, out of 70,000, I mean, so it's a blip and most of them don't care about it. If TOTV can show Mr. Ed Jones, that's his sign from last time. I helped him a little bit in the end. It was too late. But he's a good example of somebody who's, this was his CRPD sign. And I put the oak tree so that we could recycle it for council. And he had 700 of these in homes. And like I said, signs are inexpensive way to get your name out. And that's not, no one, and it's what helps incumbents. And no one on the council even touches that. I mean, it's so disgusting. The number that has not been brought out is what is the amount, total amount of money that's being spent in other cities? And that's why the problem is. Our wonderful former mayor received $50,000 from special interests and family, but she added another $20,000 of her own money as padding. And nobody can stop that. And so when you have $100,000 being put in, you need to be competitive regardless. I guess it's an exercise in futility to come over here. You're not going to do any changes. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Okay, we are now going to discuss the local campaign finance reform ordinance follow-up. We do have three outstanding issues that we didn't, where we did not reach agreement at the last council meeting. However, before we do that, I would like to actually go over item number six again in the hopes of perhaps getting a little bit of, of a compromise from the last session, which was vendors. I think there may have been a confusion as to, because it also mentioned applicants with pending businesses before the council or the projects before the council, which is not what I actually intended. I thought that the prohibition on vendors with current contracts would actually be a sound idea. And I wanted to open that up again because I see that we're moving into possibly changing contribution limits, fundraising timeframe, timeframe, and the aggregation of contributions. And so with the entire, with the entire campaign finance ordinance now being changed, which wasn't really my intent when I initially suggested also that we deal with contribution, I mean, with campaign reform. Nonetheless, it's, it's something that we are faced with now. So I was hoping that perhaps we could revisit the, that item that dealt with vendors with pend, with existing current contracts with the city. While including applicants with pending projects before the city is something that perhaps would be too restrictive, I would be hopeful to change the law that mirrors that of other cities as well, where they prohibit vendors outright from giving to any candidate's campaigns. Mr., Mr. Adams?
Well, the, the beauty of this process is we had a discussion about this last time and I think we've all had a chance to reflect a little bit about some of the issues that were unresolved and maybe some of the issues that we thought were resolved. And I have thought about this contribution business and who, who we should be allowed to take them from. And in my remarks prior, I felt that the way it was phrased was just way too broad. And I think we all agreed on that. You know, we, do you single out corporations, contractors, citizens, attorneys, nonprofits, applicants? It just seemed like way too broad. But, you know, I think, I think there might be some value if we look at it in a more narrow scope with entities that have existing contracts, that is, existing contracts, not pending contracts, not old contracts, existing contracts with the city of Thousand Oaks. I think we all acknowledged here in the last meeting that there is an inherent conflict of taking a contribution, if you're a candidate or a council member for that matter, from an entity that has an existing contract with the city. And a couple of the council members remarked that they just wouldn't do it, just wouldn't do it, not appropriate. So my thought is, well, you know, maybe, maybe we ought to formalize that. It's prohibited in a number of cities. City of Los Angeles prohibits it. Because, you know, a lot of, a lot of government is appearance and perception. It would prevent the appearance of any type of corruptive influence. And even more important, it would prevent the appearance of a sense of obligation that a candidate or a council member might have to, to an entity that has a contract with the city. My thought would be to perhaps narrow it even further and put a threshold as to what that contract size might be. Certainly, you know, I don't know the realm, the realm of contracts that we have here, and they may vary from the hundreds of dollars to the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it would seem to me that if we were going to pursue this, we might want to put a threshold. I believe city of Los Angeles has a threshold of $100,000. That might be a little high for us, but I was thinking more in the, maybe the $5,000 range. And I think, you know, if we, if we narrowed this down, we might be ultimately doing a service to the citizens of Thousand Oaks by eliminating any, any aspect of improper influence that might be perceived. And it's something that we've all agreed we wouldn't do anyway. So there's some of my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Ms. Irwin?
I think part of the reason that we said we wouldn't, or at least that I said that I wasn't really in agreement with that is because it's, it's going to affect very few people, but it might be a lot of work for our staff. And then we have to look at how it's enforced also. And lastly, I mean, look at what's happening at the Supreme Court. These, you know, there is a pretty good chance that all limits are going to be erased. I think you're putting something into effect that's basically, the Supreme Court is going to come down and say that, that campaign contributions for these, these current vendors are free speech. So I think we're, I think we're moving in a direction that is, you know, somebody could, obviously, somebody could challenge any of our ordinance, but this is, you know, that's, that's, I believe, why that decision was made in the first place is it's, it complicates things for staff. Who enforces it? How do we know who all the current contractors are? Do we have a very long list? Maybe we can ask the city attorney, how many contractors do we currently have that are over 5,000? And does every, do we hand a big list of those to the candidates? I think it complicates things and I think it's probably illegal.
We have obviously numerous contracts. I think our, I'm trying to remember, our purchasing ordinance requires contracts at a certain threshold. It does not go to the city council. The city manager has authorization to enter into contracts at a cap of $50,000, I believe. So anything less than $50,000 does not go to the city council. It's, it's, the city manager has the authority to enter into those contracts on any, in any given year. And I wish Mr. Adams was here, but I think we have probably hundreds of contracts. And we contract for everything from what we buy, our paper, you know, our, our paper, our gas, our, our, you know, Kleenex, our cars. I mean, we have various contracts, our solid waste contracts, you know, tree trimming services. You know, there's hundreds of contracts that we have. We don't have, I don't think we have a list. We keep them all, obviously, in our budget and it's all itemized that way, but we don't have a, keep a separate list of all of the contracts that we have. So we would have to put that together. And I would imagine we'd have to provide updates throughout the campaign so that, you know, as contracts expire or are terminated, you know, those, those businesses or entities are off the, the no contribution list. And then we would add those that are entered into, you know, that we entered into contracts with as we go through the campaign cycle. Hopefully that answers some of your questions.
So, yeah, I mean, that's, I think, basically why we came to the decision last time. Very complicated, additional staff time, how do you enforce, probably illegal. And again, I, I go back to what I said before. Everybody has to file campaign disclosures. Everything is transparent. Every, every, you know, all the money you collect has to be disclosed. The newspaper writes a report on it after any candidate that, that feels that there are campaign contributions that are, you know, could potentially influence, council members can, can bring that up, can talk about it in the paper. So that's what I think our discussion ended up at last time. So I'm, I still would be, for, for all those reasons, I would still be opposed to it.
Mr. Price?
If I didn't say it last time, I'll say it now. I think we're attempting to, with an ordinance like that, I think we're attempting to fix something that isn't broken. And I don't see a reason to do that. There are enough laws that end up on the books that probably don't need to be there. And I don't think that we need to engage in that. And as Irwin, Mrs. Irwin has pointed out, it's, that would be very, very difficult to police and who would do it? I, I think that the best people to police that are the candidates themselves and, and the residents who are reading over those campaign contribution reports. And they do, we know that.
I wanted to mention that it wouldn't be staff that would be charged with figuring out which vendor gives to which candidate. It would actually be the candidate and his or her treasurer that would be responsible for, for doing that, not staff. There are other cities who actually take it a step further, not only vendors, but they also prohibit applicants with pending development projects from giving to, to candidates. And Los Angeles was mentioned, that's just one of many cities which do that. And if it were extremely burdensome, then probably the laws would have been changed or cities would just not enforce the law or eliminate it altogether. But that does not appear to be the case. It is just an example of good public policy and just good policy altogether to have such a policy in place and, or a law in place to make sure that everything is transparent. Yes, contributions obviously are on the city's website, but the average resident does not look it up on, on the website. And yes, the newspapers do it too, but the newspapers can go through hundreds and hundreds upon hundreds of contributions. There are not that many reporters left in local newspapers anymore to do investigative reporting. And so it is something that is, can potentially fall through the cracks, not necessarily, will it influence a council member? You know, we, we don't know, yes, no, but other cities have done it. And I think it makes, it makes, or a candidate, I should say, not only a council member, but it makes sense to, to have something like that in place. Just makes, it's just common sense, actually. We, we mentioned that it's, we wouldn't be doing it, which is fine. We can actually put it in writing. And I don't think it's going to be so burdensome, if at all, to go through the, to go through contribution lists and, and see which, which vendor has an existing contract with the city or not. There, there can't be, I mean, not all the hundreds of vendors the city has actually contribute to a candidate's campaign. So it makes, to me, it just makes perfect sense. It's common sense to have something like that in place. And if there is a threshold to be put on this, if it, if it helps, then certainly we can, we can do that. I prefer no, no threshold, but if others are amenable to that, I can certainly live with that. Mrs. Irwin?
If you do read the report, there's only 14 cities that have, 14 out of 138 that have something like this. And again, I think it's for all the reasons that we've stated.
All right. Mr. Adams?
I'll just say one more thing. I agree with Mr. Price. This would be a self-enforcing measure. I wouldn't expect city staff to have to publicize the companies that we do business with. It would be up to the candidate. I mean, most of us get contributions from individuals. So, if all of a sudden you're offered a contribution from the XYZ Corporation, it's not that hard to use a little common sense and say, do you happen to have a contract with the city? I mean, you might just know by the name whether they do or not. It's, I don't see a problem with the enforcement. I don't see the staff getting involved. This is a candidate-centered situation, and it just, it just sends a message that we believe in unconflicted government, and we're ready to put our money where our mouth is. Oh, that's a bad analogy, put our money where our mouth is. But, you know, if we all agree that we wouldn't take these contributions anyway, then, you know, why not, why not formalize it?
Well, let me weigh in here. I actually agree with a lot of the analysis. This is something that's not broken, and we're trying to fix it. That's the first thing. Second thing is, I do believe that it is not realistic to put it on the candidate treasurer, who is a volunteer, we've all had that before, to, throughout the course of the campaign, go through and either, first of all, we all know there is no direct contact, most often, with people that contribute to campaigns. You get a check in the mail. Most of us don't know necessarily the people who are writing the check. And it is very problematic. I think fundamentally, this is something that is, again, we're fixing a problem that doesn't exist, and I see it as an enforcement nightmare for a whole variety of reasons. The other thing I think that's to point out is, this makes absolutely no sense for anything that doesn't come to the council. Because something that doesn't come to the council, we're not weighing in on. We don't even know about it. So, how could there possibly be a perception or a conflict of interest on things that are being approved by the city manager? We don't even know. So, clearly, anything below $50,000 shouldn't even be considered because that's done by the city manager. So, now we're, now we're getting involved in the city manager's decisions on, you know, what he or she approves in terms of a contract, and then can that person contribute and at what level to candidates. So, I just think this is problematic. I do agree with Mr. Adams and the mayor. I think that the symbolic value of this is huge, is, hey, we don't take money from people that have contracts with the city. I think what we've done is, we have stated that publicly. I don't take money from people that have contracts with the city, never have. I think many, many years ago, somebody tried to give me a contribution, I sent it back. But that process is, somebody calls to your attention, your treasurer, it's not a simple situation. I think comparing us to a place like the City of Los Angeles is, that's not apples and oranges. That's, you know, I can think of a lot of analogies. That is a, that is a different world in terms of campaign contributions. That is big city politics, and we are in no way, shape, or form even close to LA. So, while I see the symbolic value, and I think we, if we really wanted to, we could fashion something to fit into a, kind of a, for symbolism's sake, maybe, but my view is, this is not a problem. It's something that doesn't ordinarily come to the council. To ask campaign treasurers to go back and do the research is problematic. They may make mistakes. They may get bad information from the city. I just, I just think that we have, we have other issues to deal with with campaign finance. I think Mr. Price has something to say.
Mr. Price? Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to piggyback on that, and it was something that Mr. Adams said that made me think of this, is that if we're going to make it part of an ordinance, then I think there's an obligation there to enforce the ordinance that's in effect. And you can't put that on a treasurer of a campaign. That would have to fall on somebody here in city staff, and we discussed the reasons that we were removing city staff from having those enforcement obligations in a number of other areas. So, I just, I'll reiterate, we're trying to fix something that ain't broken.
I would like to add to the cities. Yes, mentioning of Los Angeles certainly is not a comparison of apples to apples. However, we have cities such as Berkeley, Coronado, Costa Mesa, Gardena, for example, that are comparable, and they all have some sort of limit as to who, which vendors, if any, can actually contribute to a candidate's campaign. And there are various limits. Contractors paid $25,000 and above, and it's pretty, it's laid out pretty clearly, and it must have made sense to those cities because they adopted it. And I feel that, that, yes, we say free speech. However, nonetheless, we, there are limits and restrictions in most cities regardless of what the Supreme Court decides or will decide or not. And when I say limits, I mean, not necessarily limits as to who can contribute, but there are contribution limits. So, just for transparency sakes, as well as just for good public policy, I would urge the council to consider vendors with existing contracts with a threshold. We're not meddling with city manager's authority at all. That remains in place, $50,000 and below. The council will have no impact on that whatsoever. If a threshold would help to find some consensus, I would very much appreciate that. And again, it is self-policing, as is the case with all of the other portions and parts of this particular campaign finance reform. It's FPPC or self-policing. Mr. Fox?
I'm going to go ahead and try to get us moving here, and I really, truly, I see the symbolic value that comes out of this. But I, and I was going to mention, I'm glad both Mr. Adams and Mr. Price mentioned it. Just fundamentally, we should not be putting something in a campaign finance ordinance that the city's not enforcing. Just as a fundamental rule, anything that goes in here, the city should be all about enforcing this, or referring it to the district attorney or some enforcement agency. And to me, that's kind of the poison pill with this, in addition to the other stuff. So, I'm going to move that we just keep the, I guess it would be current language. Is that where we're at? Madam City Attorney?
The current language or the direction that was given at the study session on September 16th was to make no changes to the existing ordinance. In other words, not to impose limits on different types of entities that contribute.
Right. Okay, I'm going to move for the current language.
So, in other words, no changes?
Right.
And no vendors with existing contracts will be able to contribute to candidates' campaigns? That's basically what it is, because we don't have any such language in our ordinance.
Vendors can, right now.
Right, right. But Councilman Mayor Protam Fox's motion, his motion is to not change the ordinance, so that would not place any limits on candidates from accepting contribution, that would not place any legal limits on candidates from accepting campaign contributions from businesses that have contracts with the city.
Yeah, that is...
Current language.
That is the current language, which is not necessarily where I wanted to go.
Exactly.
That's correct. That's completely opposite.
That's his motion. That was the motion at the last meeting, and that's, it's the same motion as the last meeting.
It's the same motion as the last meeting.
Right.
Yes.
Any other comments regarding this?
Well, that, the threshold concept is, I think, even more valid and narrowing, and I appreciate this discussion, it's good. And that $5,000 number I threw out is, upon discussion, obviously, too low. The $50,000 number would make sense to me. So, but, yeah, and so it looks like we're going to allow candidates to take contributions from businesses that are, have contracts with the City of Thousand Oaks. We're not going to prohibit it, we're going to allow it. We're not going to prohibit it, and we're going to allow it.
The other thing I'd just add, I think Mrs. Irwin's points need to be taken. If you look at what's happening with the Supreme Court, it seems pretty clear that ruling after ruling after ruling is siding with free speech. So, I, you know, there are, if you weigh the pros and cons of this, and there are pros and cons, in my view, the cons far outweigh the pros. The pros, I don't know how we get much farther than, symbolically, it is a good thing, and if, and I guess substantively, it is a good thing in terms of not allowing contributions from contractors or vendors with the city. But there's these whole other, the devil's in the details, that's a problem. And one is, the city has said they're not going to enforce it. So, we're putting something in an ordinance that we're not going to enforce. Second is, the Supreme Court is likely to opine it's unconstitutional. Third is, we don't even deal with contracts that are, that are below $50,000. So, I mean, like I said, I think there's points, but on par, I think the cons far outweigh the pros on this issue. Like I said, I readily see the points you're making, and I think all of us agree to those. That's why I don't take contributions from people that have contracts with the city. Fundamentally, it's, I think it sends a bad message.
The other portions of the campaign finance ordinance in terms of enforcement have been all relegated to the FPPC. The city attorney has basically, the city attorney's office has cleared itself or removed itself from any sort of enforcement regarding our campaign finance ordinance. The way, since our last council meeting, the way it stands is that no enforcement by the city whatsoever, everything being relegated or delegated to the FPPC, which is something that we could do with this particular ordinance regarding vendors as well.
Just to clarify, at least, this was my understanding of the direction. Right, the FPPC will only enforce state law. It can be referred to the district attorney for criminal enforcement. In other words, an intentional violation of it. But the ordinance, any type of civil remedy, as it currently is written, the city is not involved in that. It requires an interested party to file a civil lawsuit. So, the three ways that the ordinance will be revised are to either have any state law violations investigated and enforced by the FPPC, have criminal ordinance violations that are not subject to state law. In other words, we have other things like the campaign contribution limits are not set forth under the FPPC. Any criminal violations of those would be submitted to the district attorney's office, or anyone who wants to bring a civil enforcement matter, whether it's an injunction or just a lawsuit, any interested party would bring that. The city would not bring that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification and correction. Yes, the FPPC would not be able to do that. And knowing that the city attorney's office is now no longer involved in enforcement, and it has, it requires a resident to file not only a complaint but a lawsuit, you're saying, that is, to me, then such a watered-down campaign finance ordinance that I'm not even sure why we're not giving it any teeth anymore. We're taking it all away.
Right, well, what would happen is, if a resident believed a violation occurred, they could submit a letter, a complaint directly with the district attorney's office or the FPPC. If the city does receive any complaints, the city would forward them directly to the FPPC or the district attorney's office. But the purpose of removing the city attorney's office and the finance department, the city clerk's office, again, is to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest. It's just very inappropriate for city staff to be investigating and making determinations about candidates and sitting council members as to whether or not there's been violations.
Yes, that is understood, but I am, I lament the fact that by referring everything to, by leaving it up to a regular resident to file a complaint or to the city, to the district attorney's office, who is so overwhelmed with real criminal cases, why would they worry about a little misdemeanor or whatever it may be, a campaign contribution? That's a waste of their time. So, I just, it's, it's, it's a problem. It's a problem that we will have a campaign finance ordinance that really does not have any teeth. And by imposing limits, such as the one on vendors with a certain threshold in terms of contracts, I think helps us to perhaps stay on track regardless of what the US Supreme Court will do or has done. This is something that we, as a city, we should do, take the responsibility and follow through with that. But we do have a motion that says, keep things as they are, which means vendors of any type or contract are still allowed to contribute to candidates' campaigns. I would urge you to reconsider that, though, and impose the threshold.
Well, we're showing a two-three vote failing with council members Price, Adams, and Bill De La Pena dissenting. I think this is the same. So, then it passes three to two.
Okay, so that was the vendor issue failing. Actually, the motion that vendors are allowed to contribute to candidates' campaigns passes three to two. All right.
Okay, just for clarification, it's current language. We didn't change anything. It's been the...
Yeah, current language, which allows...
Since we've had campaign finance, that's been the rule.
Yes, yes, which allows, yes, which allows vendors to contribute to candidates' campaigns. So, that has not changed. It stays as is. All right.
Slexic.
Now, we can go to the contribution limits, which was item number five.
I just have a question for the city attorney, madam mayor, relative to our last discussion. And that is, Ms. Noonan, if we were to put limits like we have now, and somebody, for example, takes a contribution of $1,000, and they say, I took $1,000 from Al Adams, who enforces that?
The local campaign finance ordinance, again, as long as it's not a state law provision, this is the ordinance.
Which is not...
It would be, a person can file a complaint with the district attorney's office, or that person can also file a civil lawsuit.
Okay, now, that's not a criminal act, correct?
It depends on whether it's done intentionally or not. At least, that's the way the ordinance is written now. Typically, with these types of ordinances, a district attorney probably would not file a criminal charge, again, a misdemeanor charge unless there was some type of specific intent on behalf of the party and proof of that specific intent. And that's because there might be an oversight, and so a district attorney typically won't prosecute for that.
So, if the, if the contribution was returned, and in a sense, the mistake cured, likely there would be no prosecution?
That's probable, yes, likely.
Right. If it wasn't, the person just said, you know, I made a mistake, but I'm not going to give the money back?
The district attorney would have the option of filing a criminal law, you know, criminal complaint and charging the candidate with violation of the campaign.
And what's the fine?
Typically, for a misdemeanor violation, it can be $1,000 or $2,000 and/or six months in jail.
Okay. I think that's important, is kind of a, to give some type of foundation for the next conversation we're going to have regarding to the limits. I think it's a good thing that staff actually did an analysis. Just to clarify the record, the vast majority of cities have no campaign finance ordinance. The vast majority of cities have none. And so, just moving forward, of any kind. So, of the cities that we looked at, we looked at like cities, and we could all kind of, you know, use our own filters, but I looked at cities such as Oxnard, Simi Valley. Oxnard has none. Simi Valley has $1,000. Glendale has $1,000. Fullerton has none. Orange has $1,000. Torrance has $1,000. Pasadena has none. These are cities that I picked out that have somewhere in the range of the registered voters that we have. I think whether it's a full-service city or a contract city, I don't think that really is relevant. Really, you're looking at registered voters and the cost to run a campaign. Even the cities that have, for example, the city of Irvine, their limit is higher than Thousand Oaks, but they allow four years to raise money. So, I think, looking at it, Santa Clarita, $1,000. To me, it looks like our $380 is significantly lower than like cities. And again, I would emphasize, many cities have no limits whatsoever. I think that there is a value, if we're going to have campaign finance, to have a reasonable limit. I will go back to, we need to base that on some metric, not just what we think from my perspective. We need to be able to tie it to like cities and see what they're doing. And it appears to me that most cities like Thousand Oaks are at $1,000 or they don't have any ordinance at all. I would overlay that with the county of Ventura, which is a little closer to home, which has a limit of $750 for county-wide offices. I think anything lower than that... I think anything lower than that, we're simply, subjectively picking a number, thinking that it, you know, we personally like it. And I would suggest to the council, that's the very problem with our ordinance, is we have five incumbents who, with the exception of two of us, have been elected multiple times, and we enjoy the luxury of high name ID, and frankly, not having to run very aggressive campaigns in order to get our name and our, our message out there. And I certainly can go back into the history of our recent elections, and I think without exception, the folks that have been successful, and even unsuccessful, but, but that finished towards the top, contributed a tremendous amount of their personal finances to the campaign. And I just fundamentally believe that this city needs to be represented by people other than millionaires. And so I, I think we need to do something, but I, I'm not sure that $380 or even $500 is anywhere close to leveling the playing field. Notwithstanding, we recognize the, the Supreme Court has said, that's not what campaign finance is about. It's about corruption. We don't have that problem in Thousand Oaks. We have a problem with only rich people getting elected, in my view. So those are my comments. I'm, I'm looking for some common ground, but I would urge the council, if we're going to make a suggestion, let's tie it to a metric that is, you know, somewhere in the playing field. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Adam.
Okay. Looks like 25 cities were surveyed here by staff. 10 have no contribution limits. So that's not a vast majority. It's less than half. The predominant metric is that 15 of the 25 cities do, in fact, have contribution limits. So I, I don't see anything, any problem with us having a contribution limit. Now, the contribution limit hasn't been raised, I believe, since 1998? Isn't that correct?
No, it's raised on a regular basis, CPI.
Well, yeah, we get the inflation raise, but the, the base rate, I think, was set in 1998 at 350 bucks, wasn't it? So it's been, you know.
It was 250, and it's been raised over the years.
Okay, so, well, the, the base rate, shall we say, hasn't been raised in, what is that, 15 years or so? So, yeah, I, I think, I think we're two for a raise. Again, you know, we, we just have to come up with a number here. If you want to use averages, if you take the four cities in our county that do have contribution limits, the average there, between those four, is about 445 bucks. If you take the three cities in the section that's called similar in population with registered voters or neighboring cities, the average there is about 400 bucks. Again, I, I'm, I'm for a raise. I think it's time. I think 750, though, is, that's 100% raised from where we are now. I think it's a little, little steep. When I first came into this thing, I was thinking 500 seemed about right to me. That's about a 30% range. And I still think that that's about right. And I would, I personally would suggest a range somewhere in the 450 to 500 range. I think that that's reasonable, and I think that it should help the non-incumbent be a little more competitive.
Now, Mrs., Mr. Price?
Yeah, could I ask a question of Mr. Adam? I wanted to make sure that I heard this correctly. The, the average amongst which three cities in Ventura County is?
Well, if you take Fillmore, Ventura, Simi, and Toyo, you add them up at 1,780, you divide by four, comes out to 445 bucks. Those are the four cities that have contribution limits in the county of Ventura.
But that doesn't take into consideration the cities of Moore Park and Oxnard that don't have any campaign?
No, it doesn't. Those, the nuns aren't, no, because we're not talking about none. We're talking about a contribution limit. So let's compare apples to apples. Compare our city to cities that do have contribution limits. And then if you take it a step further.
But I think that has to be part of the discussion. That's my point.
Yeah.
I just want to point out.
Well, again, I'm trying to come up with a rationale, something reasonable. And again, I, I do think we need an increase. And I just feel like $750, it would, might be a little steep. That's 100% jump.
Five minutes ago, we weren't really that interested what other cities, like cities, were doing in terms of campaign contributions and, and the sources of those contributions. Now, we're, you know, taking them apart to see which city has a limit, which does not have a limit, and how much is the limit. Obviously, a suggestion to double our current campaign finance, current contribution is, in my opinion, way too steep. The, we have to, we have to remember, the average non-incumbent, and you can go over the last three elections, does not have access to a network of donors able to donate $750. You look at the Raymond Sabrinos, the Deborah Byrne bombs, and, and other candidates who have run for office at least one time, they do not have access to a network of people who can donate $750. That network is only available to incumbents. And to say that non-incumbents are disadvantaged by this, in my opinion, is not a fair statement, simply because the facts prove otherwise. I've gone over the last contributions and disclosure forms, and the non-incumbents have spent maybe $5,000 at the most. Why? Because, first of all, they are not millionaires, they are not wealthy, and they don't have access to deep pockets in town. So I definitely want to put to rest any notion that non-incumbents are disadvantaged by a low contribution limit. In my opinion, it's only incumbents who benefit from a high contribution limits, because we can access everybody here. We've gotten to know people over the last eight years, 12 years, 16 years. And we're able to hold fundraisers where we can bring in thousands of dollars, but the average resident wanting to run for office, city council, simply does not have that access. And therefore, I don't think that $750 will actually do us any good. Yes, I can see how over the years, you know, perhaps we are in for a tiny bit, for a small increase. I can certainly see that. But history shows that the average candidate spends a few thousand dollars. In the last election, we had a non-incumbent, obviously, who spent, I saw in the, in one of the local newspapers, $80,000. A vast majority of that was the candidate's own money. But again, and I will say it over and over and over again, you cannot have access to someone that's, that can give you $750 or even $500, and let alone $1,000. So I would really urge the council to stay within a reasonable limit that is not elitist, that is not for, I, I see it as elitist, actually. And by the way, I don't know if any of us here are millionaires. But given the, the property values of homes in California, Southern California, perhaps we are. But I would really implore the council to stay within a reasonable, realistic amount so that we don't, as incumbents, have an advantage over non-incumbents. I would certainly suggest $400, $450, but I don't think we can go any higher than that.
Mayor?
Mr. Adam?
Yeah, I just, you know, I really think that the advantage incumbents have in collecting contributions isn't necessarily the, the limit on the contribution, it's the volume, the sheer volume that incumbents can collect. A, a person just starting out just doesn't have that network. 25, 30 people give. Somebody like an established council member may get 300 or 400. So regardless of the limits, 380 or 750, that sheer volume is going to push that person to a, you know, a very tidy sum of money to run a very solid campaign. So, yeah, I, it, it's not, again, it's not so much the limit, it's the volume. And the volume is built up over time, over years, with name recognition, with good deeds in the community, with, with, you know, building up your, your reputation. But, yeah, I, I have, I, I have to agree with the mayor. I, I don't mind a, a increase. I think it should be somewhere around the 475 dollar range. I mean, we got to pick a number, right? No matter, ultimately, and that, that's what I'm thinking. 475, 500.
I mean, I would prefer no number at all. I'd, I'd be happy with leaving the language as is, but Councilmember Irwin, I think, wanted to weigh in as well.
I actually wanted to ask staff, we had the, we have a, a chart of certain cities that you looked at, but on page 24, you do say, out of the 138 cities that were surveyed, only 32 have voluntary expenditure limits? Is that correct? So it's not?
That's relating to voluntary expenditure limits, yes. The charts that are in the current staff report are cities that were requested at the study session. Ventura County cities, the Ventura County itself, comparable cities, and also threw in some other similar-sized cities with population the same as the city of Thousand Oaks.
Okay, so, so actually, Mr. Fox is correct in saying the vast majority of cities do not have limits.
I can look and see if I can find the figure on the total of the 138 that we.
Says 30.
That are posted, that have local campaign ordinances, whether they have actual contribution limits.
Okay.
Some of them have, you know, different components, time raising, fundraising, fundraising timeframes, and et cetera.
Okay, and then, and then, just one other comment, Mr. Adam, when you're talking about the volume, obviously, you're making Mr. Fox's point for him, that it's easier for incumbents to reach a large volume of people. It's not necessarily a, a large amount. If a, a non-incumbent comes in, they, they, if the limits were higher, and they just knew a few higher worth people, they would have an easier time.
On this business, maybe I'm not hearing things right. I, I'm presenting a staff report with 10 Ventura County cities. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine comparable cities, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, cities in similar population that have the same amount of registered voters or their neighbor cities. I'm presuming the staff would want to hone in on the cities that had the most in common with us. That's 25 cities. 15 of them have campaign limits. That, that's the majority. Only 10.
I, I was just talking about the other statistic, they, that's in the staff report. That was where they surveyed 138 cities.
All right, well, I'm trying to.
But it, I mean, you're, in the end, the mayor's right, we're going to have to decide what we want to do. I mean, this is just a guideline to look at what other cities do, and, and many cities don't have limits at all. And it seems from the chart that most cities that are similar size have limits of 1,000. That's what it seems like.
Well, just for clarification.
What we're being presented here, the comparable cities with us do have.
The, yeah, I'm looking at the population that's on the chart.
Mr. Fox?
Just for clarification, if we're looking at Ventura County, and I don't know if this gets us anywhere, six of the 10 cities have no campaign finance ordinance. They, and, and clearly, they've discussed it over some period of time, somebody, they've chosen not to do it. So the majority of cities within our county don't have it. Now, if you go one step further, then you look at Simi Valley, who has substantially more. So now, we're at seven cities that either have no ordinance, or they're above Thousand Oaks. So by just Ventura County standards, we're, in my view, well below the norm. By any measurable metric, we're below the norm. Three cities. And so then, if you look at like cities in Ventura County, you have to look at Simi Valley, our neighbor. 70,000 registered voters, 78,000 registered voters in Thousand Oaks. Their limit is 1,000, our limit is 380. I say that is out of line. Then if you look at like cities, Glendale, 97,000, Orange, 63,000, Santa Clarita, 105,000, Torrance, 84,000, these are all cities that basically have campaign ordinances in place, and the limit is $1,000. So the question I would ask is, by raising it, what is the purpose of raising it?
I ask myself that. Why are we raising it? Why don't we leave it the way it is?
So if you're inclined to raise it, and some of us may not be, I get it, and we can have our own perspective on why we're not for it, and I think reason people can look at that. But if you're inclined to raise it, then what is the reason for raising it? For me, I've been very clear. I think that it is an unfair advantage for non-incumbents, precisely for the point Mr. Adam brought up, because of the sheer volume of contributions that incumbents receive for a non-incumbent that doesn't put substantial funds of their, their own money in to be competitive. What is possible, though, is they could go out and find five, 10, 15 people, if your limits are at a level where, if you, for example, if you found 20 people to contribute $1,000, now you've raised $20,000. And we both know, even at $20,000, that is, you'll, you'll be stretched to run any kind of real competitive campaign. At $380 to $500, I would suggest we just leave it to where it is. Because we're, in my view, and respectfully, I think we're just, we are showing some signs of change, but there's no fundamental change, in my view. This is, this is, the reason I brought this up, is I've watched this over the years. I've watched some of you here struggle with this issue, okay? And I've watched other people get elected that have wrote themselves 102, 200,000-dollar checks, who are basically non-entities in the city, and basically bought themselves a council seat. So the, in my view, the, the evidence is overwhelming that either you put in your own money to get elected, or the incumbents are going to get elected. And by the way, I think this council's functioning fine, from, from my own viewpoint. So that'll be up to the voters to decide if they want to change. This thing's been on the books for a long time, and we have not adjusted it, and it's out of line with, in my view, any reasonable metric you look at. If you want to look in Ventura County, we're out of line. If you want to look at like cities where there are registered voters, we're out of line. So if we're interested in doing something, like I said, let's tie it to a metric.
Mr. Fox, you know, in 1998, 1997, we convened a blue ribbon committee of community leaders and residents who came up with this ordinance. Perhaps we should do this again. Now, on the eve of our 50th birthday, convene a blue ribbon committee and have them go through it word by word, comb through the entire ordinance, and see what they could come up with. Because I feel that we are somewhat doing a disservice to those residents who so long ago, or a few years back, took the time to do the research, to come up with a sound campaign finance ordinance. And I think it would only behoove us, as well as the city, to replicate this. Mr. Price?
A couple things. First of all, there was, there's been some comparisons made based off the chart here. If you're looking at the, the chart, it's page three, in the agenda packet, it's page 14, that has comparable cities. There are eight cities there, seven of which have campaign limits, one of which that does not. If you average those out, and these are like cities, or comparable cities, the average there is $720. So I say that to say this, that I don't think that we can arrive at what we think is right from what is on the papers here. I think that we need to come to an agreement here amongst ourselves. And I also think that the Blue Ribbon Committee that met, was it 1997 or '98? That was a different day. Dollars were not the same as dollars are today. They may look the same, but they don't spend the same. So I don't think that those folks thought that, you know, here we are, almost 15 years later, that the campaign limit would have only risen by the CPI. So I, I think it is time to take a look at it. I think it's time to, to raise it to a more reasonable figure. And quite frankly, I don't think $750 is unreasonable. I don't expect to get that from many people. But I, I agree with Mr. Fox that it certainly gives the non-incumbent the opportunity to go out there and make some real good friends, and try and get maximum contributions from those folks. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Adam?
We might be beating this into the ground, but, yes, I do believe it would help the non-incumbent to have a raise. I'm not against a raise. I'll say this, though. Mr. Fox's number, 750, that's 100% raised from where we are now, roughly. A strong incumbent in this city, even without putting in their own money, can easily raise 50,000 or 60,000 dollars where we are now. Now, if he's got a, he or she has 100% raise in the campaign, campaign contribution limits, this isn't going to extrapolate exactly, but that 50 or 60 could easily become 100. this isn't going to extrapolate exactly, but that 50 or 60 could easily become 100. Could it not? Meaning that, yes, it's going to help the non-incumbent, but it's also going to help the incumbent to raise a lot more money and give that incumbent an advantage. So I guess I'm just, I just think 750 is too high.
Mrs. Irwin?
No, just a quick point. It's very, very, very difficult to raise 50,000 at 360 a person. And it's...
Well, but it's done. Look at the numbers.
It's a big effort.
Yeah, I raised 40. You raised, what, I don't know, 60 or 70? I mean, it's...
I can see your point that it's...
It's down all the time. I'm just, the point being that if we raise a contribution up to 750, those incumbents are going to raise even more. They're going to be up to 75, 80,000.
Well, and, yeah, that is, that is a good point. Most people will not be giving the full contribution. It's more that, that if you have a non-incumbent and they just have a much smaller group of friends, that maybe they can raise something that would make them somewhat competitive. And then, again, the same thing that I said before. I mean, I do believe in campaign limits and, you know, that certainly corruption sets in at a certain point. That's really the only thing we're supposed to be taking into account is...
That's true.
At what, you know, at what point does it become a corrupting influence?
Or they call it a sense of obligation.
But the...
Terminology.
It is unfortunate that, I think, with the direction that the Supreme Court, again, is going, is that, you know, no matter what we set the limit to, eventually, it can be called into question. But, yeah, I don't have the...
Well, what about voluntary expenditure limits? That is something that at least one city is doing. And if we really are concerned about the rising cost of elections, we can certainly impose limits. I mean, yes, it is very difficult to raise 50, 60, 70,000. But again, if it helps the non-incumbent, it definitely, definitely helps the incumbent. There is absolutely no doubt about that. And is it easier to get checks, 750-dollar checks than the 350-dollar checks? Yes, we probably arrive at the 50,000-dollar limit faster, not limit, but threshold faster than with 350 or 380 contributions. There is no doubt about that. Again, the cost of elections, as has stated before, is only increasing. Raising the limit is making the elections even more expensive. And so I think we've been doing fine within the last 15 years, the way it's been. It's not easy, and whoever said running for office should be easy. But when you look at all of the non-incumbents that have run in the past 10, 12 years, the average non-incumbent has probably spent no more than $5,000. And it is the well-connected non-incumbent that probably is doing better. But we had proof in the last election that even when you spend a vast amount of money, doesn't necessarily buy you a seat on the city council. So, I don't know.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Adam?
Yeah, well, why don't I make a motion here and then just see what happens? Does that sound like a good approach? Yeah, it sounds to me like everybody is in favor of a raise to one degree or another. I'll throw out the number 475. That's a 25% increase from where we are. And on this particular issue, that would be my motion.
That's item number five, contribution limits to 475. Any discussion or comment regarding 475?
Can I ask for some clarification? The existing ordinance does have that CPI adjustment factor. Did you want to include that in your motion or eliminate that?
Keep the CPI adjustment. I think it's a small number, and it'll just keep the number relevant as we move through the years.
Councilmember Irwin?
Well, I mean, with, is there, I think there was, there were differing viewpoints. I don't know if Mr. Fox was saying, what were you saying? That if it's below 750, it's not worth it? Or that's, I don't know if we should just be voting. Maybe if we talked through a compromise as opposed to yes or no in...
That'd be good.
475? Did you say 475?
Yeah, I said 475. I, like I said, I came into this thing at 500, but...
I came in at 380.
I think, I think 475 is a good number. With the CPI increase, it'll keep the number relevant for some years to come. And, you know, I'm sure we'll have to review this again in three or four years. We can look at it then.
Maybe we should all throw out a number and take the average.
Oh, boy.
I think 475 was the average, right? Kind of, mayor?
Yeah, well, that's debatable, as we've seen, but...
I am one very unwilling to move from the 380, Mrs. Lawrence?
I just wanted to point out, if, based on the current ordinance, if we implemented the CPI, it would go up to 400. I just wanted you to be aware of that figure, from 380 to 400.
If we don't do anything, it goes up to 400.
If we don't do anything, it goes up to 400. Okay, that's fine. With the CPI, it's going to be a little bit higher. I find the ordinance fine the way it is. I don't think we need to tinker with it any further. I would prefer to leave the language as is. But we have a motion on the floor to raise it to 475.
Hold on a second.
Mr., the son of a math teacher is doing some math here. And I'm certainly willing to compromise, but I don't have a lot of wiggle room here. I really think that we are now doing ourselves a favor in raising the cost of elections. What number did you come up with, Mr. Fox?
I'm just looking at the, if the present, if we did nothing, it's at 400. If we take the lowest metric that I think is reasonable, which is 750, which is LA County, which is Ventura County, if we, the difference between that is, I believe, 375 or 400, right? 350 bucks. Half of that is 175. So if we take 400, we add 175, we're at 575. It's convoluted, but I can live with it. Again, I just fundamentally think that we're, you know, I don't know, but it's a start. And I think that we need to come back and revisit this more than, you know, every 15 years, you know? So...
Well, we could go over this every 10 years.
I'm trying to kind of go where Mr. Adam's going is, it's basically, it's a halfway point.
We should review this more than once every 15 years.
Yeah, it's a halfway point.
That for sure.
So I'll...
It is a halfway point. And yes, after 15 years, it is time to review it. But to take the teeth out of the ordinance and to raise limits is not necessarily a good thing, in my humble opinion. If we go, and when we go over the campaign disclosure forms of all the candidates, we will see that the people attracting the higher contributions are not the non-incumbents. And that is simply a fact. It's available on the city's website. The non-incumbents are not the ones that attract the high donors. I just want you to be aware of that. And I think the residents need to be aware of that as well.
Well, that may be a perspective. I would just share that, once upon a time, I did run as a non-incumbent. And I wasn't, I did not have name ID or any of that other stuff. And I had a great fundraising team, and we did a pretty good job. And it was the top fundraiser. And that was in the era where no limits. But I didn't take a contribution above 1,000 bucks. That was self-imposed. So I know that was 20 years ago. It was a different time. But I would just point out, it is possible, and I think the mayor's exactly right. We have examples of the last election. And there were other elections that I've been participants in where people wrote themselves a lot of money, and they were not elected because their message did not resonate with the voters. But the reality is, if your message doesn't get to the voters, they don't get to decide whether it resonates or not. And that's where I believe that we need some kind of reasonable playing field for campaign contributions. I do think that there is a point where it becomes a question of corruption. I don't think that's the case here in Thousand Oaks. So, kind of in line with what Mr. Adam was talking about, if we're at 400 now, basically, we're doing nothing, and we took the ceiling of 750, if you cut that in half, basically, you went 25, I'm proposing 50. It puts you at 575. Do I think that's going to make a fundamental difference? I don't. I don't think it's enough. But I think it's a start.
How about if, to keep it just even, we cap it at 500 and revisit the campaign contribution limits in five years to see what sort of effect it has on council elections? Yeah, well, I would say, yeah, four or five years after the, you know, in two elections from now. Just to review it, just to see what the cost is, and whether anybody, what the expenditures are, and so forth, whether it is having an impact on council elections. That is something I think I could live with.
With the CPI, then? Mr. Price just asked...
Well, if we revisit it in four to five years, then I would just leave it...
We should do the CPI.
You want the CPI?
Yeah. It's a CPI anomaly.
Why don't we just make it, why don't we just make it 575 and leave, keep the CPI out of it?
Because the mayor likes 500.
You're really talking about 150 here.
Because the mayor likes 500.
Yeah, no, I don't even like 500. I don't like 500. No, I don't like 500, but I'm doing it as a compromise.
She's willing to go to 5, Mr. Fox.
And then revisit it in, after the last, next two elections, just to see the impact it has on council races.
Okay, but including the CPI, then?
Okay, including the CPI.
Include the CPI.
Is that your motion?
That is a motion.
All right.
Love it.
Mrs. Noonan?
Mr. Price? I believe Mr. Adam had a motion pending. Would you like to?
Cancel my motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Noonan. Okay, the motion...
Withdraw my motion, I beg your pardon.
The motion would be to raise it at 500, CPI included, and revisit campaign finance ordinance two elections from now to see what impact this has on council races.
Four years from now, you're saying?
That would be then four years from now.
Okay, four years from now.
I mean, we have a next election next year, and then, yeah.
Okay, that's...
In a non-election year.
Okay, 500 plus CPI. And we're all in a, well, I don't know, Mr. Price, are you in a...
It'll be interesting to see what I do.
Okay. All right, please vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And now, number eight, aggregation of contributions. And... Oh, I'm sorry, number seven, fundraising timeframe. Yes, thank you. Fundraising timeframe. Right now, the fundraising timeframe is six months. And I think that is a wonderful window of fundraising and campaigning, and doesn't need to be expanded, as a matter of fact. But we could not come to an agreement at the last council meeting. So here we are again regarding that. Mr. Adam?
Yeah, again, I've had, I like the way this is going because it has given us a little time to reflect on it. And I have had time to think about this as well. And I know some cities in here seem to have unlimited timeframes to raise money and campaign. And I know we threw out the number one year, we threw out the number nine months. Upon reflection, however, I think the public has signaled, whether it's a national election, state election, local election, they get tired of these long campaigns. They really get tired of these long campaigns. And the result is, I think, the public can become apathetic. I think they can ultimately tune out the message. And in worst case, they almost get antagonistic. You know, when is this campaign going to end? When are these signs going to come off my lawn, off those lawns, et cetera? And the end result, and that can be lower voter turnout, lower voter turnout. So I don't think this is a big deal. I would have to agree with the mayor on this. I think just keep it at six months. It's been working for years. And maybe I could use Mr. Price's analogy. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Mr. Price?
And with that, yeah, thank you. Well, I don't think we need to revamp everything. I don't know that we need to have signs out there, you know, for the first day that kids are out of school. I think that the sign restrictions are just fine now. I do think, though, that we could revisit the period of time that a candidate can raise funds. And I do believe that that will be something that will allow non-incumbents much more flexibility to be able to raise larger sums of money. I honestly do. Might it also, for non-incumbents? I suppose it could. But there might be some non-incumbents who choose to just wait until May and start their campaign fundraising. So I...
Whatever benefits the non-incumbent definitely benefits the incumbent. So...
Well, then...
This is a recurring theme about non-incumbent, but truly, it's incumbents that are setting this. And I can't help it.
I don't think it's one more than the other, necessarily.
Yes, I know. No, no, and I do understand your point of view as well. I, again, this has actually worked quite well in the last 15 years, the fundraising timeframe, and I don't see why we need to tinker with that, really. It, we had non-incumbents being elected in, you know, in that timeframe over the last 49 years. So why would we want to change it now? We were all non-incumbents at one point in time. And we were, we did okay with a six-months window. So I would like to make a motion not to change item number seven, fundraising timeframe, and leave it as is. Any discussion?
Yeah, just...
Mr. Fox?
Again, just discussion. And I'm looking more at the mechanics of what you're raising money for. You're raising money for something to put in someone's hand when you knock on their door? You're raising money for a sign that if they're willing, they'll put it on their front lawn? And you're raising money for sending them something in the mail, saying, "Vote for, vote for me. Here's the things I've done, or here's the things I'm going to do." Now, we already have limits on when those signs can go up. And, but there is no limit on when you can knock on someone's door. We've referenced Mr. Jones a number of times. But if Mr. Jones wants to go knock on doors in February, he has to pay for that himself. Because you're not allowed to raise money until June. Okay? So, no, you have to use your own money, which is my point, is... And then, if you want to put a piece of mail out, no one's, you know, that takes time to do that. So I think the six-month time, if you actually look at it as a practical matter of your campaigning, I don't think that gives candidates enough time to do what they need to do. I think January 1st of an election year is reasonable. I also say this, that most folks that are serious about running for a campaign, running for office, around January of that year, they're putting a committee together, they're starting to formulate their platform, they're doing things. They're getting a fundraiser, they're doing a number of things. I think not allowing anybody to even raise money until June and then expect that they're going to try to have a walk piece and send somebody a piece of mail by August or September is basically giving them three months. And then, we can go back to the math exercise that we did the last time here. You know, even though we've raised it to 500, I just think it's hugely handicapping. You know, whether it helps the incumbents out, we're already here. That's the question I would just say, is, we've already got elected. One way or another, we're sitting here. So, you know, my view, this is really about thinking, since we've all gone through campaigns, just the fundamental mechanics of the campaign and what makes sense for somebody running for office. I just think six months is just not enough time. To me, January 1st, and I think there's a few of their, of their election year, is reasonable. I know some people do unlimited fundraising, and I tend to agree, that could be problematic. But January 1st of the election year, you're talking, you know, additional six months for somebody to put together. And I don't think anybody's raising money in January or February. But if they want to, you know, they can at least raise some money to get a walk piece if they want to go knock on doors. That's, those are my thoughts. I'm not going to get stuck on this. I'm just trying to lighten the council a little bit on, you know, why we're doing what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mrs. Irwin?
Yeah, I don't really have a strong feeling one way or another. But looking at all the information that our staff has compiled for us, there's, I think, one city that has the same timeframe for the election. Most cities have no timeframe. Now, I agree with Mr. Adam. I don't like this constant campaigning. But allowing people to start in January, I think, is sort of a, might be a reasonable compromise when you look at how restrictive our timeframe is compared to every other... look at how restrictive our timeframe is compared to every other city in the county, every other comparable city except for Burbank. There are a few that say, that start also on, well, I don't even think there's any that only allow nine months, so I, I think that, I, I know, at, the last time we had the discussion, we talked about a year, I think nine months is kind of a reasonable compromise.
But this would be actually more than nine months, wouldn't it be 10 months? Yeah. 11 months, exactly. Mr. Adam?
Well, I'll tell you this, Costco has Christmas trees up already, and it's only October. So I would think if you're gonna, you know, well, no, the point is, it's a, it's a turnoff to a lot of people, you know, although it's, you know, it's great for business, I guess, but, I mean, if you're going to knock on somebody's door in January of an election year and ask for money, I'd say you're doing it at your own peril, because the typical homeowner's going to say, "What are you doing here? The election's not for 11 months." So, I don't know. I, I don't think this is a big groundbreaking issue here, whether it's six months or nine months, but I'm, I guess, you know, after, having been through three campaigns myself, I, I found that the six months was plenty of time, and had no problem. And I was a non-incumbent the first time out, nobody knew me, and I was able to, you know, I mean, you start planning before the six months, obviously, but, you know, when the bell rings, it's plenty of time.
Mr. Price? Thank you.
Yeah, I think if you knock on somebody's door in January, asking for money, by the time November rolls around, they're going to have forgotten who you are anyway, because others are going to come in behind you, much more closer to the election. I do think that it's a short timeline, that six months, and, actually, I guess I have a question for the city attorney, I suppose, and that is, on a campaign mailer, is there a prohibition about, as to when they can go out?
Well, you can't raise funds six months before, and you can't spend those funds until you have the funds, so you can't.
But if you paid for it yourself, if you financed it yourself?
No, because I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the definitions, and again, it's still, it's still deemed a contribution, even if it's to yourself, it's still deemed a contribution.
And the same true, would be true then of a walk piece, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, in other words...
So you couldn't finance it?
You cannot make up, expend your own money to make up a walk piece, it's, it would be prohibited.
Okay. I, I would be comfortable moving it out to nine months. I'll say that, and now I'll be quiet.
And nine months is not January, it's, right, yeah.
So, just to, irregardless of the, the number of months, because it looks like maybe nine might be amenable to folks, but setting that aside, did I understand you correctly that if, I keep using Mr. Adam, so I'll use his example, because he's here, if Mr. Adam wants to go out and spend his own money, get a walk piece, and knock on somebody's door in March, he's prohibited from doing that?
Well, from what I can read by the ordinance, a, hold on, hold on a second, when you're talking about contribution limits, it opposes the limits, but it specifically exempts contributions from a candidate's own personal fund.
Okay. Is there any way that's going to pass constitutional muster?
You know, I don't know, that answers that question.
You can use your walk pieces from the year before.
Yeah.
No?
I think what you said.
You can't, not under that ruling, because you're still using funds from a previous campaign.
No, I think, I think, I remember going through this, and you are prohibited from using your own funds if you want to go from door to door in February, you can't do that, or before. You can, as, as the ordinance reads now, you can raise funds in May, in May, which I think has worked well in the last 15 years. We are all non-incumbents who have survived the six-month window, and have done quite well, because we're, well, four of us, I would say, we are elected, and so it's, it's, I don't think we need to tinker with it. I think this is something we can leave alone, really.
I just, for the record, there were substantial funds, personal funds, put into those campaigns, and that's been my point the whole way through. And the, my sense is, the reason there was substantial personal funds is because you, a candidate was unable to raise sufficient funds in order to buy the walk piece, buy the mail, so that's why there was substantial personal funds. And it goes back to the fundamental point I'm making. If you don't have the $15,000 or $20,000 to give your campaign, you're done. That's the point. So, you know, again, I'm not trying to, it, 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 it's just a fact, and that is why those contributions or those personal funds were put in, because, one, getting the, the funds at 380 bucks is very, very difficult, and, two, the timeframe to do it is very limited if you want to get your message out. I think what we're trying to strive for here is not requiring a candidate to write themselves a check for 15,000 or 20,000, because most people, I don't think, are in a position to do that. I would argue they shouldn't have to do it.
And I don't think that most candidates are doing that. Most candidates are not doing that, they're waiting.
The ones that are waiting.
And if, if they do give themselves a loan, then they get it back either toward the end of the election or after the election, when you still have a window to raise funds to make up for the money you put into your campaign. So it has worked well for 15 years, it has not hampered non-incumbents from winning office and being elected to office, and I don't see how we, we need to change it, we really don't. Mr. Price?
You brought up an interesting point, there, you have that 90-day period after the election to raise funds. Is there some flexibility in shifting that to the front end? Maybe not all of it, maybe 45 days of it? In other words, you would have 45 days after an election to...
I think, I think the reason you have that window after the election is to recoup some of the costs that you may have incurred without needing to pay out of your own pocket, and I think that gives people an opportunity to, to still go to donors. That is just, I mean, we can certainly get rid of that altogether, and then take that opportunity away for candidates who have lost or won, it doesn't matter.
I understand what the purpose of it is, and I'm suggesting that we take those, that time period and move it onto the front end of the election cycle, as opposed to...
But then you take that opportunity away from, from the candidate that either won or lost to raise money to recoup costs.
I get that. I'm just throwing it out there.
I mean, I've never used it, I've never raised money afterwards, ever, 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 and I'm not sure if there are many of us who have, but...
Yeah, I don't know. If there aren't, then...
I think, no, I think there are, but, again, it's, I, I think we should have that option available, if, if he or she wants to use it. Yes, Mr. Adam?
You know, I, I really think, for a non-incumbent that's running for city council, that has money and is willing to spend it, I think you might almost be able to say that if you give them an extra three months, they're going to spend even more money. You know, I mean, they're going to, they're going to write that check, and, or, or maybe I could put it another way, you've given them an extra three months, it's not going to prevent them from spending more money.
Actually, I, I do recall going over campaign contribution disclosure statements, there, we, we did have someone who was able to raise 130 or 40,000 with smaller contributions of 300 per person max, and within the six-months timeframe, so I, I, I don't think we have a problem raising money in six months, we really don't, whether it's your own personal funds or raised funds, there is no problem with that. Well, the, the motion would be to, I did make the motion to leave things as are. Things as are, not things as is. So make no changes. That would be, that is my motion, and I would ask you for a vote on that, please. The motion carries 4-1 with Councilmember Irwin dissenting. Okay, thank you, that passes. Now, item number eight, aggregation of contributions. The proposal by staff is to be in line with state law, and I think that's what it was, Mrs. Noonan, right?
Uh, there was, no, I don't, this was not, this was just, again, this was no recommendation from staff on this one, this was indicating what the aggregates are, and whether, whether you want to make any changes to it, whether you want to be consistent with state law.
Okay, staff recommends, that was just, staff did not recommend changes to item eight, aggregation of contributions, and to leave as is, which I would be in favor of as well.
They made no recommendation.
Right, this, right, no recommendation.
Oh, they made no recommendation, okay.
An area for council to consider. I think there was only three or four areas at council that staff made a recommendation, the majority of it was...
Okay, there was no recommendation, okay, so the preference would be for me to leave things as they are. Any other, well, I, Ms. Irwin?
I think it, you know, as with most of the things that we did two weeks ago, I think it's just more consistent to go with state law, as opposed to having our own ordinance. It probably makes it easier also, I, this is, again, the, a complaint would go to the DA, right, Ms. Noonan?
Under our current aggregation ordinance, it would go to the district attorney's office if it's adopted based on the FPPC rules, and it would be submitted to the FPPC for investigation and enforcement.
So, so I like that solution better.
I don't think, with perhaps a rare exception, we've had, had any problems with the current aggregation of contributions, the way it has stood and been on the books for the last 15 years. I think it is really not that cumbersome to leave things as they are. I think that, of course, when you take in hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of contributions, of course, it is work to go through everything, however, it, I think that this is something that has worked for 15 years, and I don't think we need to water it down by changing it to be more in line with, with state law. I would prefer to leave the aggregation as, as is, Ms. Irwin?
I don't think it's watering down, I think the big difference is that it's consistent, and then it's, and then it's enforced by the FPPC, so the question is, is it preferable to have it enforced by a FPPC or district attorney? And to be consistent with the state or not, so, I mean, I, I don't think the, I, I, there's nothing you can read as you read through it that makes it look like it's watered down. I don't care that much one way or another, but I do think consistency with the state on the whole would be preferable, and, and enforcement by the FPPC.
Well, the way it's currently written is that it would go to, to the district attorney or the FPPC, correct? Just the district attorney?
Just the district attorney. The FPPC does not enforce local provisions of an ordinance.
Okay, but there is a change between the way the state identifies or determines, defines aggregation of contribution versus the city.
What the state does, at least this is the way I read it, what the state does, for instance, let's look at, let's look at number six of the FPPC on page, I think it's, I believe it's page two, that last attachment, attachment three. Talking about contributions of an entity whose contributions are directed and controlled by any individual are aggravated, or aggravated, I'm tired, sorry about that, Freudian slip, aggregated. And so with that, I, the way I read that is very similar to what Thousand Oaks has for the first one, and the second one, and the third one. It's just that what, what the city does is it breaks it down to the type of business, at least that's kind of the way I read it. You know, because, for instance, the first, the first aggregation provision of the municipal code talks about boards of directors. Well, there's no boards of directors in LLCs, so if it's an LLC, number one wouldn't apply, but it would apply to the second one. Under the FPPC, the first provision, I think, applies to corporations, LLCs, it doesn't matter what type of business entity is formed, it, it matters, the focus is more on the relationship between the person who's controlling that business and the business. Does that make sense to you? At least, that's, that's the way I read it. But if you look at six and seven?
Well...
So, again, it's, it's more just a matter of, again, it, it appears to me that when the municipal code was drafted, there was an attempt to identify the different types of business entities, like, and, and in the FPPC statute, they, the focus is not on the type of entity created, it's focused on the control enjoyed by members of that business entity.
So if I were to receive a, a series of contributions from what appears to be two different companies, but I find, I discover that actually one of those companies is a subsidiary of the parent company, how would that be treated?
If it is, again, a contributions where the, the businesses are directed or controlled by the same types of individuals, then under the FPPC, it doesn't matter whether it's a parent subsidiary relationship, it doesn't matter whether it's an LLC relationship, it doesn't matter, it's focusing solely on the type of control by those, by those entities and by those persons.
So if those entities control other companies that all fall under the same huge umbrella...
They would all fall under the FPPC aggregation provisions.
Okay, and...
I, I think, again, I know.
I'm trying to find out which one is more, which, which has a better definition, which one is clearer? It doesn't seem to me that, that the state's definition would be clearer than the city's.
It, it actually, I mean, I think that as a, as sitting council members who've gone through a campaign, I think that you all would have better experience with what's clearer, because you have gone through this. Again, I think that the intent of the municipal code was to identify the types of businesses, to make it clear that whether you are an LLC or whether you're a corporation, if you're a corporation, then section one applies, if you're an LLC, then section two applies, if you're in a parent subsidiary relationship, section three applies.
So under the state law, if you are an LLC that contribute, that has other sort of branches, you would, that would be identified under state law but not under city code?
If, no, it would be identified, because, again, the second provision of the municipal code refers to officers, which are typically found in LLCs, managing members and so forth. It could also be in corporations, but again, what state law does is it doesn't focus on the title of the business nor the title of the person who has control. They don't, the FPPC doesn't care whether it's a board of director or an officer or managing member, the, the, the FPPC is focusing on, again, the type of control by that person and the type of control by, of those entities.
Then would it be at all possible that I could receive a contribution from someone under state law who would be prohibited from giving me a contribution under the city ordinance?
Um, let me see if I can think of an example where that could happen. Well, let's see, let's see if, if the first one, ABC, you know, I tried to give like real-life examples for the majority of, for board of directors. So if you have two corporations, and you have boards of directors, for each corporation, they're the same three people, they're aggregated, and I think that that would apply for the first one, or actually, number six of the FPPC, and even number seven, I think that this, that one would apply. For the second one, on having two officers, the only way that I could possibly see it is if you have officers, but they don't have any decision-making ability. You know, if you have, if you have officers of a business, of two businesses, but those officers, even though they're common officers of two different entities, but they don't have business-making decision, in other words, they don't have the authority to make those decisions, then arguably, it wouldn't be an issue under, no, actually, it still would be, because it's still directed or controlled by the persons. I'm hard-pressed to find an example of where you could, you could have a, where aggregation would be imposed on the municipal code and not with the state. Trying to think of an example, I don't know if any of the council members have ever had that experience.
Well, thank you for hanging in there, I appreciate that, I just wanted further clarification before I make up my mind, but I, I viewed, the way I interpreted both was that perhaps the city was a little bit more restrictive.
The, actually, the only thing that I see that's very different is that, is that the thousand, the municipal code actually has a caveat, where it's saying that unless, unless in fact they are making independent decisions, and I don't see that caveat, or in other words, that exception under the FPPC. It doesn't matter whether they make independent, oh, actually, it does on the last one, unless they, so, yeah, I'm not, I can't find any distinctions, I'm not sure if the city clerk has an example that she can come up with.
So, in other words, the difference then really is that this would be enforced by the FPPC and not necessarily by the district attorney unless a resident files a complaint and refers it to the DA?
Well, again, the district attorney would have, would have jurisdiction over our municipal code, which they have right now, the FPPC does not enforce what we have. If you go with the FPPC guidelines, regulations, then the FPPC would... If you go with the FPPC guidelines, regulations, then the FPPC would enforce it.
What do you recommend, Ms. Noonan?
Say again?
What do you recommend?
Well, again, I, you know, I, I think that, I think that, I will just tell you from my experience, I've worked for various cities, and the aggregation provisions are the most complicated provisions in any campaign finance reform ordinance. I have not worked for a city where a candidate has not, has not had problems with it, because they were unaware of relationships between various types of entities. So, regardless of whether you go with the local provision or the FPPC provision, there's going to be issues, because it's, it's very difficult to ascertain relationships between individuals and businesses. The one thing I do appreciate with the FPPC one, however, is that the FPPC has much more experience, in my opinion, of enforcing that provision, whereas the district attorney would not have as much experience in that. That's one thing that I look at, just his, from a historical perspective. You have the FPPC, that this is their job, this is their regulation, and for any city that has this provision, they are the enforcing agency. Whereas the district attorney has to look at each of the cities and try to make, try to ascertain. The district attorney can do that investigation, but it's just a very different type.
Mrs. Irwin?
And that actually points out a big advantage of having the FPPC. When, when I have had questions, they have clearly been, been able to answer them, and so, if we went with state law, as we've tried to do with most of the other aspects of our ordinance, we would be able to call somebody up that could give us answers, and I think, now that you've explained it, very unlikely that we would get the same answer as quickly from the DA.
What I can do, though, if, if this is, if you are concerned that there might be some, some situations where it would be prohibited under the local code and not on the FPPC code, between now and the time that we do our, again, where we bring the ordinance back, I can do some more research, you know, see if I can talk to my fellow city attorneys throughout the state and see if they can come up with some examples of where there would be. That way, if I do find a situation that would be different, I can bring it back during the public hearing. If that would, if that would appease the city council, I could do that as well.
Okay.
May I just say?
Mr. Price?
Thank you. While I don't have a whole lot of experience with campaign finance laws and prosecution of them, I do believe that the district attorney's office would be much more reluctant to enforce a local campaign finance law than the FPPC would. And I think the FPPC has demonstrated that on a number of occasions with high-profile individuals, the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, a number of council members who have been sanctioned by the FPPC for accepting things, gifts. So, I think that not only would it give us the, that layer of insulation and not, I, I think that somebody would be much more closely scrutinized by the FPPC than they would by our local district attorney's office.
Well, you know, I, I don't think the DA has time to worry about campaign, that's what I said at the last council meeting, they have bigger fish to fry than to worry about some campaign contribution.
Then I think we've answered the question.
So, yes, I think I, I've been, I think you answered my questions, Mrs. Noonan, and I, I would actually be okay with approving that.
In fact, Madam Mayor, many times the DA will defer to the FPPC or ask the FPPC for guidance, because they just don't have the expertise. So, I think...
Was there a motion for that?
Our city attorney makes a good point about...
I think you made it.
Mrs. Irwin?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'll, I'll make the motion. Well, I, I sort of...
Didn't the mayor make a motion?
Was arguing it the whole time, but I...
I know. Thank you for your patience.
I, I will make the motion that we change that part of the ordinance to make it consistent with state law and have enforcement by the FPPC.
Okay, then please vote.
And the mayor did have a motion on the table, so that's withdrawn.
Oh, I did? What was my motion?
To leave it as is.
To leave it as is, I withdraw it then, thank you.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right, so, gosh, that was just a lot to digest. What is two and three? Okay, so, Mrs. Irwin?
I move two and three, too. Staff recommendations.
Please vote.
Councilmembers Irwin and Fox can vote. Just a little late on clearing the vote. Motion carries 5-0.
All right, we have that behind us now, and, almost behind us, and, Mr. Mitnick? Wait a minute, the city manager? Yeah, Mr. Mitnick, follow-up items, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up, as mentioned earlier, we will work with those residents who have taken the time, again, to come down and talk about the proposed developments on Hillcrest Avenue. I did briefly meet with them out in the hallway and told them that we would ensure that they are kept in the loop. No additional follow-up items from items tonight, other than as we were directed on each one. The next city council meeting will be two weeks from tonight on October 22nd. At this point in time, we're looking at three public hearings, one dealing with the allocation of a small amount of the community development block grant funds that are allocated to the city, some sort of technical cleanup items. Then we have the proposed adoption of the conservation element update to the general plan, as well as the open space element update. We, we come back to council periodically with those elements. And then, finally, the social host ordinance update. We will do that, and that's per a previous direction from city council. Also, at this point in time, one department report, and that has to do with the latest on the proposed sister-city status. Also, a couple, residents are always encouraged to go to the city's website to see what's going on in the community. We have a community calendar, and that's the helpful. This weekend, Saturday night, there is the police department's tip-a-cop program, and we do this from time to time, and the FBI will be part of it, actually. This will be at the Red Robin Restaurant at the Oaks Mall. That'll be Saturday, October 12th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we'll have a link, or at least some information, on the city's website. That's the follow-up. Madam Mayor? Oh, I skipped right over, right smack in front of me. Coming up on Saturday, October 19th, that would not be this weekend, the following weekend, the, the annual Caneo Open Space Conservation Agency's 23rd Annual Trail Work Day will take place, and that will be at Caneo Canyon's Bridge in Hill Canyon. And again, we'll have more information. I'm looking for the time, it's in the middle of the day, so we'll have information. And if it rains, of course, we'll have a rain date. Thank you.
And while you're speaking of Trail Work Day, I also wanted to mention that on, I believe that same day, we have, no, this coming Saturday, we have the grand opening or, an opening of Santa Rosa Park at 1:00. There's a ribbon cutting, and everybody on the council and the public is invited as well. All right, we are now adjourning to a closed session. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a joint successor agency city council closed session for the successor agency to the Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency and City of Thousand Oaks Conference with Legal Counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9(c), and a city council closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9(c). It is unlikely I will have anything to report following these closed sessions.
Thank you very much, and this meeting is now adjourned until October 22nd. Have a good night.